That the planning commission will certainly be a better place to, to deal with, with our new planning commissioners. So now, if you could, I would ask for the formal roll call. Thanks.
Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Gonzalez is here. Check three.
Here.
Last check out.
Thank you. I believe we, we have a quorum. And so I'm going to ask for a review and approval of the agenda. Any comments on this week's, this month's agenda? And then call for a motion if there aren't any.
Hi, Ellen.
Okay.
I wanted to suggest that we-
Excuse me, Commissioner Hamilton.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to suggest that we might pull item number three.
We're not on consent yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought-
Any, any comments on the agenda or a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we will move on to the consent items. And I believe staff-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If you might ask if anyone in the audience has anything to comment on that's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Right. Before we do that, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? That means something that's not on the printed agenda tonight, but someone would like to make a comment about. Okay. Hearing no public comments on non-agenda items, then we will move on to consent items. And I believe our staff has a comment generally about consent items.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Hamilton, I want to apologize. You could actually address the consent items in the overall agenda, but I just kind of wanted to wait and package it in the, focusing on the consent. And I also just wanted to sort of start, since we have some new members, and it's always good to refresh everybody's memory in the public about what goes on with the consent. Consent items are those things that the staff has reviewed and worked out any details or wrinkles with, we feel, to a satisfactory level. Even though we're not the deciders, we do not approve things. You all do. But we think they're at a point where they can be approved in a perfunctory manner through the consent calendar. Having said that, our protocol to date is that if you have any questions of staff on items on consent, to ask us technical questions. And if we can just answer them to your satisfaction, then we move on and they stay on consent. Likewise, the chair usually, in addition to addressing any questions from the planning commission to staff, allows the public to ask the staff any technical questions regarding consent items. If, again, we can address any questions from the publics, from the public about items on consent adequately, then we move on to approving the consent island, items, which means they're approved in whole. Having said that, if a commissioner has something that they want to deliberate about an item on consent, or if after having asked a question, we start to get into a give and take, then it should stop at that point and be pulled from consent and considered so that the full protocol of asking staff numerous questions, listening to your own, to each other's questions and public's comments can take, take place. As far as whether someone in the public asks for an item to be pulled, it's usually protocol to find out what it is they're asking, why it is they're asking for that item to be pulled. And while it's at the discretion of the chair and the commission whether or not to pull it, it's usually done out of courtesy to the public that's shown up and has a concern. And I would back up and say, when staff puts it on consent, not only do we think that all the wrinkles have been hammered out, we also have not heard from anybody in the public that has any angst over things. And having said that, they could end up coming here without having contacted us and have angst. So that's why it's so important to ask the public. So thank you for that opportunity to explain.
And thank you for that clarification, because it's always been a little bit of a ether, you know, thing about when, when we move things from consent to agenda. Okay. So that, that was really good. I appreciate that. So the first item on our consent, well, okay. So are, is, is there any, any, anybody out there in the audience?
Usually you-
First, the commissioners.
Yes.
Okay. I, I know we have one. Does anybody on the commission have a comment or question about any consent item?
I had a couple of questions on 132 Wood Lane. And I was also just going to suggest pulling it from the consent calendar because of a couple of questions, and also because it felt like a fairly substantial, it just felt of a different scale than the other ones in terms of converting a laundry to another bedroom. And so that was my suggestion, was to pull it off of the consent calendar, to have a little bit more conversation around that one.
I also have a- Through the chair, I had just a couple of questions on, on item number two. Nothing major, just a few questions.
Item number two is 2374 to 2378 Sir Francis Drake.
Sir Francis Drake, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So you, if you, if these are technical questions, you could ask them without actually pulling it. You could see if that suffices.
Let's give it a try. And I guess staff might know this. I was out to look at the property, and I wasn't sure if it's only the panels that are being removed, or the entire frame of those balconies being rebuilt.
I believe it's only the panels, but we can ask the applicant, it's just the panels, right? The posts are remaining.
The post.
And, and actually, if we get anything besides a nodding of yes or no, we'll have to have you come up and speak in the mic for the record. But I think a yes, confirmation's fine.
Okay. I do have just a couple of other questions or, or comments. Will the building be painted at all? Or is it just limited to the new panels?
This application doesn't include painting. They may have plans to do that, but that's not included in this.
Okay.
It's just the garbage enclosures and the railing replacement.
That's what I thought. I don't know that we can require it. It would just, would be nice at some point if you would want to consider that. And then in terms of the olive tree, I love olive trees. And it is such a large property. I hope that the tree is at least, I don't know how many gallons, but I would like to see a, a container for that tree that's a good four by, or five feet large.
And now, Commissioner Fergoso, we are getting into the discussion. So if you want to further pursue this for-
I'd like to pull it then for a couple of questions.
And just for the record, it does require 24-inch-
24-inch box.
Box. It's in the, it's in the staff report.
24 inches insufficient, in my opinion.
Good. Pull it.
Okay. So that, then that, that will be the, since that, that property is number two on the agenda, that should be the first one we discuss when we get to the, the agenda.
And, and of course, the order is up to you, but it would seem logical.
Okay. And then I believe there was a mention of comments on number three, 132 Wood Lane.
She just wants to pull it.
Yeah, I was, I, I was, I was going to pull it because the nature of my questions would automatically lead to them saying, if you have that many questions, you should probably pull it. So I just figured to preempt the questions and say I should, I'm suggesting pulling it. Although, if you all would like to hear what those questions are, to see whether you support that or not, because we do have to vote on pulling it. Yes?
And, Mr. Chair, just for the record, Commissioner Hamilton did call me ahead of the meeting, and I do believe that the nature of her questions go in, are a prelude to discussions. So I think it'd be wise to pull it.
Okay. Well, based on representations of staff about the conversation, we will also pull 32 Wood Lane and place it on the public hearing items agenda. Are there any other comments about the consent items? Okay. Bruce?
I just had a, a quick comment. I don't think we need to pull it on the, on item number four, Five Arrowhead Lane.
I'm not saying anything.
Just a comment that I know there's a reference to the lighting needing to be dark sky lighting, and that being what's, what's preferred there. And it also, the, an earlier agreement had said incandescent color lighting. And I just wanted to point out that that doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to be incandescent, that we can get LED lighting that's, it would be called warm white. And that's what a lot of LED lighting is these days. So we definitely can have energy efficient lighting under that agreement.
So noted.
And that's all my comment.
So noted.
I have another comment. I don't think we need to pull this one either. And it has to do with the lighting. And that is reference to last year's Arrowwood Lane project, where we had a person that had some flat LEDs that were aimed down, and we thought they were pretty good. So if, that, that, that's what I would ask staff to perhaps direct the owner to that type of lighting. And that's all my comment is. So did the public, anybody out there in the audience have any comments or questions on the consent items?
And that would be item one, four, or five?
Okay. If you could, if you could just state which property-
There's a little button right at the bottom. You got it.
The red light goes on. Thank you.
Kind of exciting. Okay. I'm Bronwyn Pugh, and my husband Dave and I are owners of Five Arrowwood Lane. So that's consent item four. And about the lighting, that's great. We'll take anything on the lighting. We're not particular at all.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just noted there was a disagreement with staff over lighting, so you should come to an agreement. One of your neighbors has a terrific lighting plan that you might want to look at. Okay. So shall we, we vote to approve the consent items that are on there? And just to be clear, that's item number one, 105 Forest Avenue. Item number four, which is Five Arrowwood Lane. And item number five, 69 Spruce Road. And item number six, 113 Hillside Drive.
Those two are being continued.
Oh, yeah. That's right. We're, we should, we should mention that, that staff has recommended, an applicant has requested continuation of items five and six, 69 Spruce Road and 113 Hillside Drive. So we, I would-
You're cons, you're consenting it, you're consenting for it to be continued?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Do we need a motion on that?
I so move.
All of them together.
Okay. All approved? A second?
Second.
Okay. All approved?
Aye.
Okay. So that does, that, that continues items number five and six. So-
So, Mr. Mr. Chair, may I just reiterate for the record? Items one and four were just approved. Items five and six were just continued. With regards to items one and four, you'll want to mention the caveat about the appeal.
Ten-day appeal.
Right. With regard to items one and four, yes, there's a 10-day appeal period, and it's a $500 fee, which is appealed to the town council.
I can't. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on then to the public hearing items. Now, anybody here for Five Arrowwood Lane, 69 Spruce Road, and 105 Forest Avenue? We are, we are done with those items, and you're all set. Remembering the appeal period. Thank you.
So may I just-
And then 69 Spruce Road and 113 Hillside Drive have been continued to next month's meeting, which is July 16th. So anybody here for those projects can also, we're all done with those projects. Of course, you can stick around if you want. That's no problem there either.
Can I just reiterate that once more, because I'm not sure it's sunk in with everybody? Items 105 Forest and Five Arrowwood were approved on consent.
Yeah, they all.
So they're all, okay. And then two and three have been pulled. And the caveat on items five and six is they are actually being continued to July 16th meeting.
Perfect. Okay. So now we move on to the public hearing items, and-
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt you again? I apologize. It's up to you which order you take the items. You typically would start with number two and three that you pulled from consent. However, if you had a huge audience here for a later item, and you want to get that out of the way, then you would change the order. But you've technically approved the agenda, so unless there's a really compelling reason, I would go with number two, three, and then your one public hearing item.
Okay. Well, let me ask those out there, how many are here for 2374 to 2378 Sir Francis Drake? Two people. And how many here for 132 Wood Lane? One person. Okay. So why don't we go on to the public hearing items and start with number two, 2374 to 2378 Sir Francis Drake? And I request a staff report. Thank you.
So the town code requires that any time there's new construction on properties located in the multiple-family residential zone, that that project come before you for approval. You need to determine that the project is in compliance with the design review criteria. This function used to be performed by the design review board, but you know, a while ago, we disbanded design review and gave you guys the authority over this section of the code. So this project encompasses the removal of the existing deck railings, which are currently sheets of plywood between support posts, to replace them with new railings that will be made out of horizontal acoya wood planks, that will be allowed to weather naturally to a gray color. The project also includes constructing new fences around the recycling areas for the project. And we've determined that the proposal does comply with the criteria set forth in the design review code. And so we're recommending that you approve the project based on the findings contained in our staff report, and subject to the following two conditions. Prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide a landscaping bond, letter of credit, or cash deposit to the town in an amount that will cover installation of no smaller than a 24-inch box olive tree, and irrigation for the proposed planter. The deposit will be held for 18 months after the installation and inspection by the town to ensure that the tree becomes established. And two, the applicant shall obtain a building permit prior to the start of construction. And that would conclude our report.
Okay. Thank you. I had actually one question about this project, but it's not a biggie. I just wanted to know exactly where that tree planter is going.
If you look at the elevation, the building's kind of divided into two parts, with four of the apartments on one side and four on the other. And it's, I believe, proposed in the center.
So it's, it's where the-
Yeah. It shows best on this lowest elevation on the first page. It's right here in the center.
Okay. So I have a photograph here of the property. And, right, so this is one side of the property, and this is sort of the beginning of the other?
Yeah. It's going-
And then there's, there recycling. So it's right there. It's right there.
Yeah. We'll picture kind of each side.
Okay. I could have asked the applicant again. So it's there, and there's a fence going across here to hide, to hide the cans. Okay. Great. Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Could I continue?
Yes.
So we talked about the tree.
I'm sorry.
I keep forgetting. We talked about the tree, and it just seems to me that 24 inches is way too small for that huge apartment building. And if amenable to the applicant and staff, I'd like to see a minimum 48-inch container for, for that olive tree. And I see you have motion sensors that you're planning to install. That's, that's fabulous. I was just kind of wondering where those would go. Hopefully, like, one on each end of the building. That seems like a really great security feature for the property. And in terms of, in terms of the addresses, I don't know. It seems a little bit odd to me, the big numbers on, on your wood. I realize it's a big building, and you need some visibility. I'm wondering if perhaps some lighted numbers close to the doors, or, I don't know, maybe on, on, on the edge, on the edge of each property? I don't want to make it a requirement, but maybe the applicant could talk to staff about something that could be more attractive, and still provide the visibility that you obviously need. I would appreciate your just taking a look at that. And I think it also would be wonderful if you could at least have the name Fair Oaks at some point on your property in the near future. I think that would help a lot in terms of people knowing where it is and figuring out the name of the building. But, but other than that, I think it should look very attractive. My last comment, though, after hearing about all the balcony failures that are occurring, is just to, when you take your panels off, that would be an excellent time to check all your framing. But I, I can't make that a requirement. And that's all the comments I had.
Okay. Well, maybe it's a good time to hear from the applicant. He can, he or she can answer some of these questions, perhaps?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Butler. I'm the architect for the project. And thank you for having us tonight, and I certainly appreciate your comments. I guess I'd like to make one clarification. The, we're not actually removing the existing deck railings that are there. We're actually applying this wood to the face of those. And the reason that we're doing that is to maintain a level of acoustic control from Sir Francis Drake to those, those units that are there. So I think it'll look the same, but we're going to leave the plywood on the other side. Just to address some of the questions, the 48-inch box tree would be fine. No problem. And that's probably a astute observation in terms of size. We'll certainly make sure the motion detectors are located in a spot that's attractive there. I think the fire department will mandate lighted numbers at, at some point, but maybe we can work with staff on revising the big number size and the name Fair Oaks at some point to be more indicative of, of the project there. And then we have, whoops, excuse me. We have already replaced the, or redone the waterproofing on the balconies to ensure that we have, protect the structure that's there. That was one of the glaring problems when the property was purchased. And so we have, we're sure that's in, well intact and new. We are slowly replacing the doors, the sliding glass doors to those units, and redoing deck, the door sill flashing and things like that. One of the things that's not mentioned is we are replacing the entrance doors to each, each side of the building. And right now, it's a side light and a door. And we thought it'd be more attractive to have a pair of doors. It would certainly make it easier to move in and out of those apartments. Anyway, we think it's a, a nice addition to the building. We really felt we wanted to enclose that trash area. You see in the one photograph, all the, all the cans out front, all over the place. So our, our, my client is determined to clean that up, including things that are stored in the, in the parking areas within the building as well. So I'm here to help to answer any questions he might have of me.
Thank you. I appreciate your response to my questions. And I did notice the new double doors. I think they'll look fabulous. And the trash enclosure will really spruce up that whole, that whole frontage. Thank you.
Since you're mentioning replacing glass doors, I just want to ask, are you replacing them with double pane, or?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, that's an acoustic thing as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, thank you.
I actually think it's single pane, non-tempered right now on those entrance doors.
Well, I meant the, the ones on the units themselves, the sliding glass door.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Now, one more thing. Is, is the construction, the job primarily going to take place within the, within the driveway, or could it, and kind of, you know, because it is on Sir Francis Drake, so we don't want to block traffic, especially every time?
Maybe I can let the contractor answer that. David?
Hi. My name's, my name's David Carlos, and I'll be doing the construction on the site. And on the previous project, we put up the scaffolding to do the repairs there. And we never had to do any blocking of Sir Francis Drake, and I don't foresee that in this project either.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Do we approve each consent item now?
No longer consent. You all want a motion? A second?
I, I move that we approve 2374 and 2378 Sir Francis Drake, application 1516, incorporating the, the comments that the owner has made this evening.
And the condition of a 40-inch box tree.
Yes. Thank you. 48-inch minimum.
48-inch box tree. The address number, you know, you can, I think we can, okay.
Those were suggestions, but I'll-
Right. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along now-
10-day appeal period?
We do have a 10-day appeal period. It's a $500 fee, and then the appeal goes to the town council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then moving along to, what was item two?
Three.
Three. 132 Wood Lane, application 15-17.
Okay. This project encompasses legalizing the conversion of an existing accessory structure from a laundry storage building into a bedroom and full bathroom. The structure was described as a storage shed with electrical and a sink by the Fairfax Building Official when the resale inspection was done of the site in 2011. The structure has now been converted into a bedroom with a full bath and a kitchenette area with a sink and microwave. The structure itself is legal non-conforming, so it's, it's in its location. It's been there since before the town's incorporation. The project itself will not change those setbacks. So they're not requesting any kind of a variance. The building's not moving. It's not being expanded. They're not adding any windows in the side that's closest to the property line. They are just requesting a use permit to abate the kitchen and turn it into a bedroom and bathroom, but they would like to keep the sink in the location where there has been a sink for many, many years. The property is located in the residential single-family zone, where accessory structures are only listed as permitted uses for parking and storage, playhouses, and pool cabanas. This site is very large. It's larger than most of the other properties in the neighborhood. And even though the accessory structure is located within the required minimum and combined side yard setbacks, as I mentioned, it's not moving, nothing's- side yard setbacks, as I mentioned, it's not moving, nothing's changing. They've refurbished the exterior and painted it, but they're not adding anything on to it. So based on our ability to make the required find, make the recommended findings, we're recommending that you approve application 1517 by adopting resolution 1517 that sets forth findings and conditions. And it does include a condition that the owners sign a deed restriction, which is a document that will be recorded at the county, so it'll pop up when any subsequent buyers purchase the property, alerting them to the fact that this is not a second unit, there's not to be a second kitchen in it. The owners made the conscious decision not to try to legalize it as a second unit because of the costs of hooking up to getting a water meter and the sewer and providing parking. So they just, they decided they wanted to go forward to legalize it just as a bedroom and bath, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, any, any questions for staff?
Okay, so just a couple of clarifications. The description on the agenda said 169, but it's really 469.
It's 469, yes.
That was an easy one. Then the, one of the questions that I had is, in approving this, we are, we're approving basically a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house to be now a four-bedroom, three-bathroom house, essentially.
Right.
So one of my questions was, was with respect to parking. And certainly this is a very large lot, but there wasn't any, any discussion of the parking or any plans that addressed parking, and so I wanted to hear about parking when you have, what's required with a four-bedroom versus a three-bedroom, and how does this fit in with that?
The town code, anything over, over one bedroom has the same parking requirement. It's only required to have two onsite spaces and one space along the property frontage, even if you have five bedrooms. So that's the way the code reads right now, and they do have the required parking for a four-bedroom house.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Then the other question that I had was with respect to the definition of a kitchen. I know this has come up in other, you know, we've had a number of other kind of accessory structures as playrooms and whatnots that have and haven't had sinks and bathrooms and things like that. And so the definition that's in here that says with any combination of the following, and it lists things like sinks and food storage preparation areas and that kind of stuff, does that mean that you can't have any of those, or you can't have two of them, or how is that interpreted?
You can't have two of them. So they're, they're asking to keep a laundry tub sink, you know, utility sink. If they wanted to put a counter next to that, it would be a kitchen.
So they're going to remove that whole counter area that you see? They're going to take that whole counter area out?
Yes, because if it stayed in, we would have to determine that it was a kitchen, and we would have to consider that a second unit, and then there would be an additional parking requirement. And the water district would require them to get a meter because they would consider it a unit, a separate living unit.
Right. And that was one of my, I, just to start off with all of these questions, you know, I think the idea of having that unit, I mean, we're talking about having units, having, you know, a grandparent unit, which this may end up being at some point or whatever. Completely support that, and it was, it was very instructive to look at just the costs of making something that exists and is a functional space into something that we can count as a second unit, in basically the way that it currently exists, was, was very illustrative. I mean, forty-some-odd thousand dollars to make something be what it already is, essentially.
Yeah, I want to thank the architect, the architect for doing that, because I asked him to put that together, because he had been looking into them, so it is very informative.
I think it is very informative, and I think it will be very helpful. I would keep this down the road for, for other folks. I think it's very informative, and I thought you did a good job of articulating that in the staff notes in terms of those costs. Along those lines, what does it take to undo a deed restriction?
Really easy. All we do is we record another document citing the number of the recorded deed restriction, and we, the language says it's being rescinded. It's very easy, and it doesn't cost very much, it's a breeze.
Through the chair, I'd like to piggyback on my fellow commissioners' comments. I, I am so disappointed that you have such a, such a sweet little property here and an accessory structure that, that could not more easily be converted into a second unit. This is not the time to have this discussion, but I believe we've identified second units and standards and potential exemptions for second units to be one of our priorities. So I'm very much looking forward to having that discussion. And I too was extremely appreciative of the cost estimates that, that were provided. I can certainly see why the owners have backed off from going any further. And, and I also plan to keep this staff report. I found it extremely informative, both in terms of the architect's numbers and the staff descriptions of, of what our code is with regard to accessory structures and second units, with which staff knows I have extensive history with myself in town. And I'm, I wonder what the need is for them to demolish the counter. There needs to be something to hold a sink. If the sink is allowed, why can there not be a counter as long as there isn't one of the other items?
Because it says any combination of a sink outside a bathroom and any of those other things.
A sink outside of a bathroom.
Yeah, if they had the sink with a microwave on a chair, that would be a kitchen. So a sink with a counter, a sink with a refrigerator, a sink with anything, a sink outside a bathroom, with anything.
Other than that with a bathroom.
Yeah. And we did that, we did that along, quite a while ago, we changed our definition of kitchen, because staff was spending an unbelievable amount of time getting complaints about second units, and the only thing that made it, made a unit constitute a kitchen was like something to heat food. And so people would just hide their stoves in the, in the closet, you know, and they'd have their little, you know, little teeny mini fridge, and it was just, we were back and forth, back and forth to the same properties, and so they ended up tightening up the kitchen definition, yeah.
Well, thank you. I think they're great proposed improvements. I'm sorry they couldn't move forward with it as originally planned. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other comments or questions for staff? I have one of the applicant, we'll hear from the applicant in a moment. Okay, so if, and there's that little button on the bottom there, thank you very much.
Good evening, our Rich Dowd applicant, not the applicant, representing the applicants on behalf of this proposed use permit. First of all, I wanted to welcome the new commissioners. Enjoy it. And I also want to thank Linda for what I consider a very well-written, concise staff report. I really don't have anything to add to that. The information was pretty much contained in a fairly long staff report for a very simple use permit project. So I welcome any, any questions you have directly.
Okay, I guess I have the obvious question. Is this sink that's going to be left without a counter able to stand that way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Seems to me, yes, thank you very much. Seems to me we have now time for a motion to, to approve, I think. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution 1517 regarding 132 Wood Lane. Approve it.
Okay, second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And there is a 10-day appeal period with a $500 fee, and the appeal would be to the town council. Thank you very much. That's, that's 32 Wood Lane taken care of. Then we move on to item number seven of the public hearing items, 2001 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, application 15-18, otherwise known as the station.
Okay, the applicants are proposing to open a restaurant on the site of the old gas station that will include indoor seating for 53 and outdoor seating for 43. There seems to be a question about what the ultimate number is, but it's either 96 or 100. I'm going to let the applicant clear that up. I, I thought this current submittal was for 96. So the outdoor dining area will include an unstructured space that can be used as a children's area or other outdoor flex space. The owners have indicated that their business plan requires that they have this minimum amount of seating in order to be successful. The parking area has been modified from what was approved by the commission for the owner of the property, Arash Salki. He, he tried to reopen the gas station there and was unsuccessful, and then got it approved for a eating establishment. So the town engineer has reviewed the proposal and a traffic analysis that was provided by W Trans, and he's made the determination that the proposed restaurant use will generate much less traffic than the previously analyzed gas station and convenience store use, and so it does not meet the threshold that would require the review and approval of a traffic impact permit. The parking lot has been redesigned so that it no longer includes any portion of the town's Bank Street public right-of-way, which is one of the issues that came up with the gas station originally. The town has plans for that public right-of-way, and it's mentioned in our general plan. So where did I lose my place there? But, so the revised parking lot is only going to provide nine spaces instead of the required 10, and there's no real designated truck loading zone. However, the owners have indicated that they won't need to use any of the onsite parking because they live close by, and that their employees will be encouraged to avoid parking onsite by offer, by being offered cost-saving benefits for utilizing public transportation and bicycling. They've indicated that they're going to have a maximum employees, a maximum of 10 employees on the site during their busiest shift. They've addressed the lack of a delivery vehicle loading zone by indicating that they will only contract with companies that have small delivery vehicles, and that deliveries will only be allowed when the restaurant is not open. So there are always many different ways to design a project to meet both the code and the needs of an applicant. Staff believes that further examination of how the parking lot and the indoor and outdoor seating areas relate to each other may be warranted, because further analysis and redesign may allow the project to provide the required 10 parking spaces and could free up additional site area for delivery truck maneuvering. We mentioned three alternatives in our staff report, eliminating the outdoor flex space and relocating some of the outdoor seating to improve parking lot circulation. Alternative two, keeping the kitchen and the bathrooms in the location shown on the September 2014 plan. The floor space that was going to be used by the convenience store for the cold case cabinets could provide additional seating. And alternative three was a recommendation that perhaps the flex space could be relocated so it's adjacent to the parking lot, and that area could be used during normal op, oh, and it could be used for parking and loading during normal operations, but could be cordoned off for special occasions. So we've recommended approval of the project, but late this afternoon, one of our commissioners raised a question of whether the parking, whether you could really turn around in the parking lot if all the parking spaces were filled. And so the planning director contacted our traffic engineer's office, and I'm going to let him address how, what they told us about that.
Okay, so thank you Commissioner Fargoso for asking this question and other questions that you asked, as well as other commissioners. And just to back up a moment and reiterate what's going on here, there, there was a prior submittal which actually had the parking in the public easement. And we had a sit-down talk with the applicant and discussed the importance of that easement to the town, and we felt it was not wise to go forward at this point without rearranging it. So they moved the parking out of the easement onto the property. Having said that, if you notice in your staff report, we also included the site plan that was most recently approved back in September. And that actually hit the requirement for the parking, 10 spaces. It hit the requirement for the, by the code, for the truck loading area, which is an onerous requirement for a large truck. So the applicants have a business model in their mind and have a sort of a threshold for seating both inside and out that they feel is critical. So they've been, you know, dealing with the Rubik's Cube of the site to try to get that business model on the site. So this most recent iteration is close to the standard of 10 spaces. And when we pointed out, when the traffic engineer pointed out that the truck loading area was not to code, the applicant offered up, and this is an important point, the applicant offered up that they would restrict the delivery trucks to small delivery trucks, and I believe we had discussed 24 or smaller, and I believe there's actually a square on the parking lot that stipulates a 20-foot truck. And then they also said that they would stipulate that the deliveries would take place prior to the operation of the business in the morning, and that there would not be any of the maximum 11 employers and any employees at any one time there, so that the truck, smaller truck would have the full use of the empty parking lot to come in, unload, and then go back out on Sir Francis Drake straight on. So we had sort of focused on, you know, moving out of the easement, getting relocated onto the site, making sure that the turning radiuses for the cars worked that could park there, and then got into the woods on the truck. And thankfully, and also I might add that the applicant was disappointed that they didn't get on the last agenda, and they were really anxious to get on this agenda, so we tried our best to work with them. And we want to support the project, and yet we sort of, we felt like there was still some opportunity if you all wanted to capture that last parking space, to sort of continue to massage the site a little bit, if you will, the parking spaces a little bit further west. There is that child's play area that is a very sort of luxurious space when you're dealing with a constrained site. And while we want to accommodate the kids and everything, it also looked like the outdoor seating area was quite luxurious. The tables are seven feet, and the space between the tables end to end are five and a half feet. So it seemed like there was some wiggle room within that outdoor seating area if you wanted to push this a little further. And then in the 11th hour, as Linda said, Commissioner Fargoso brought up the very pertinent issue of what happens if a car pulls into the parking lot and it's full? So I was not able to reach David Preasey, our prime traffic consultant in, at 4 o'clock this afternoon, but I was able to get one of his staff, who's a traffic engineer, and I asked him to confirm whether in David Preasey's letter, which talks about someone coming in and going out, whether or not they had actually cognizant the issue of if it's all full, can someone turn around and get out? And so he looked up the engineering calculations for the standard car, which go way back to a 19-foot car, which is quite large in this day and age, and said no, in terms of the, I think it's called ASHT standards. In terms of the ASHT standards going with the worst-case scenario of a 19-foot car, as you can imagine, a 19-foot car turning around in a 24-foot drive aisle is very difficult. So this raised a bit of a last-minute kerfuffle with how does a car, when they come into the site and it's full, turn around and go back out? A Mini Cooper, no problem. An old car, a problem. So that's something for you all to grapple with tonight in your review of this.
So I just want to finish. We love the design, we think it meets the criteria of the design review set forth in the design review ordinance. The sign program seems very reasonable. It is a site that does warrant some extra different signage because it's surrounded on two sides by streets, and the building is set back from the road. The only thing we had an issue with is we recommended that they relocate the children's art sign, because it's going to be on the side of Broadway where there's no sidewalk, and there's really no way to get there and look at it, and they're agreeable to that. So they are going, we are... So, they are gonna, we are recommending approval of the encroachment permit for the portion of the pedestrian sidewalk that will be in the Bank Street right-of-way, but we included a condition that prior to issuance of the building permit and the framing of that sidewalk, they will have to record a revocable encroachment document so that when we do need to use our Bank Street right-of-way, the regulation will be in place to go ahead and remove it without having them sue us. So, that would conclude--
And, Mr. Chair, if I can also add, we also had some questions from Commissioner Newton, and I'd just like to briefly address those. There is some question in terms of interpreting the plans as to actually what kind of trees and how many are getting removed. I believe there was a reference somewhere to a redwood, so I believe Commissioner Newton will be asking the applicant about the disposition of any of those trees. I think there might be a really small redwood in the, sort of the Bank Street area, I'm not sure. Likewise, Linda just addressed Commissioner Newton's second issue about the children's art wall. And then also--
Do you want me to take that one about the westbound traffic?
No, let me do that if I may. And the live music, we believe that the applicant is no longer asking for amplified keyboard--
Oh, they are.
Oh, they are. Excuse me. Oh, forgive me. Okay, good. They can speak to that when they get up. And, let's see. I believe that in the prior application before the redesign of the parking lot, they were talking about fifty outdoor, fifty in, and then that got reduced down to fifty-three indoor, forty-three outdoor, ninety-three seats total, and you can confirm that again. Let's see here. The bathrooms went away with the reconfigure, the outside bathrooms went away with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, just wanna confirm that. There was an issue with Commissioner Newton as far as traffic going eastbound, sorry, westbound on Sir Francis Drake pulling into the parking lot. And while it's similar to sort of someone coming westbound, turning into the Parkade parking lot, which is an example I cited with Commissioner Newton this afternoon in writing, that one's a little bit different because it's right before the Klaus intersection, and there is a turnout lane for going left there. And after this discussion, or after this email discussion with you, Linda reminded me that the traffic engineer way back when we were entertaining the gas station proposal, and I think it survived into the yogurt discussion too, he is against westbound traffic turning into that parking lot, so there'd be some--
Yeah, 'cause he's concerned about that there's a bike travel lane there too, so he doesn't want people turning--
Yeah, so we would be signing no-left turn westbound on Sir Francis Drake. Crosswalk, Mimi, Commissioner Newton, also referred to as Mimi, brought up the issue of, well, if someone parks in the Parkade, they can't just walk directly sort of the most, you know, direct way. They have to sort of go across Broadway in front of the Fairfax, a fair, variety shop, and then back across the crosswalk next to that little island of parking, and then across the old Bank Street easement, and that is, that is true. And then, good, bad, or indifferent, that whole intersection is a giant challenge. I've been targeting in my mind a crosswalk across Sir Francis Drake from, it's sort of towards the bicycle museum, which would eliminate three crosswalks to get to the, to the bike museum. It would just be two crosswalks. So, that's really sort of off this issue in terms of how far off the site we can reach for extractions, if you will. We're really limited legally to doing that. It's a good catch, and that intersection deserves a lot of attention, and I might remind you that if we ever really improve the transit corridor going all the way to the San Rafael hub, depending on what sort of technology is used, there may or may not be in the future a major opportunity to redesign that intersection, but that remains to be seen. And then lastly, let's see, Commissioner Newton, and forgive me, I don't wanna take away all your points, Mimi, but you have something to say about the astroturf, which is turning out to be a potential hazard for health. And lastly, I'm sorry?
Trees and the petroleum.
Ah, and the trees and the petroleum that's actually still being mitigated onsite, and she'll have a comment on that. So, forgive me, I hope I didn't steal your thunder, but I just wanted to get all that out there on the record. Questions for staff? I'm sorry, I don't think your things--
I don't--
There you go. It's on now.
Okay. So, yeah, so I'm now entertaining from the, from the commission, questions for staff. Go ahead. Mimi, you seem to have a lot of issues, so go ahead.
Yeah, I probably, just because this is my, my first one here, I have a lot of questions. You know, the, the right-of-way, the, the walkway is going over the right-of-way on these plans, and I, my understanding is under the general plan, the sort of long-term vision for this area is to extend Bank Street out to Sir Francis Drake, right? And that's why that easement is there, right? I also am curious about why we, if we were gonna take down those trees to put that walkway there, why you wouldn't try and do something along the lines of what we have with M&amp;G where you have an exit route onto Broadway from the backside of that property?
Yeah. You know, that was, that was reviewed when the gas station was trying to go in, and I'm not remembering why they decided to scrap that. Do you remember why?
If, if I understand you, instead of the crosswalk going across Broadway across the Bank Street easement, you're talking about why isn't it going across--
You're talking about--
No, 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 I'm talking about the parking, the parking lot for the station restaurant. It has an end side, and the end of it is the walkway, and then there's Broadway, right? On the Broadway side? So, why wouldn't you just have an exit? If we're gonna take--
I'm just gonna look at having an exit, the driving, being able to drive through. I don't remember why.
So, I just wanna make sure I understand. We're talking about the sidewalk?
I'm talking about the parking lot, the egress and exit from the parking lot--
Okay.
--in a car.
I can't recall either exactly why that didn't mature, but I think it has something to do with the distance of the curb cut to an intersection, one, and there's also an elevation change that's more significant than you might see and then the line of sight. So, it was the geometrics with being close, because once, if Bank Street does in fact blow through, get reinvigorated, you have a four-way intersection, and our code actually restricts driveway curb cuts within a certain distance of that intersection.
So, even though we don't yet have Bank Street there, the restriction is because someday Bank Street might be there, so you can't do this now?
We want, the town is very interested in reserving its option of blowing Bank Street through, so we try to plan to allow things to stay in compliance should the town exercise its right to use the easement that was in fact once a roadway.
I understand that. I guess my concern is that it seems like if it was feasible physically and financially to make an exit, because, you know, M&amp;G's parking lot is brilliant because you can go in and you can go out, and when this was a gas station, it was very difficult to go in and get your gas and go out because it was right there next to the intersection. And I noticed that the entrance is closer to the intersection than it was when it was a gas station. There was an entrance to the parking area that's now envisioned as the outdoor seating area, so you've moved the entranceway to the parking lot closer to the intersection now.
But still with that, was still outside that code restriction?
I understand, but I, my point is that I think as you're exiting out of that parking lot on that side onto Sir Francis Drake, you know, it's, it's gonna be a little bit tricky. And, and so I was just curious about, you know, how feasible it would be to pave over the backside to have an exit, and you could have a stop sign there to co-exist with the stop sign at the end of Bank--
And you have the authority, you have the authority if, if you want to continue it to ask them to have a traffic engineer analyze that and either indicate why it's possible or why it's going to be difficult.
Well, I first wanna address it with you guys because, you know, if the applicant was willing or interested in that kind of an approach--
So, Mimi.
--and they could, if Bank Street was ever developed to go out to Sir Francis Drake, you know, re-figure it, and they were willing to consider that, I just wanna see if, if that would violate the code because Bank Street has yet to be developed.
So, so, your, your point's well taken. You can always build in caveats with a situation like this that should win and if the town exercises it, that some stipulation that you'll work with the town on circulation issues, but you could be creating a situation where you can't get out of it, depending on the geometry of the situation. Having said that, when you get into these technicalities, we're not the learned professionals that have to have their signature on the dotted line for liability issues and to guide the town. So, as Linda said, it's absolutely true. It's totally within your purview if you wanna explore this option, and what would happen is they would ask their traffic engineer to explore it, and we would have our traffic engineer peer-review it, unless they wanna just go right to our traffic engineer, in which case that's an option too.
No, I don't--
Actually, forgive me, I misspoke, I misspoke.
Our engineer doesn't usually design--
That's right, forgive me. I beg your pardon, I misspoke. So, so, that's totally within your purview, okay?
Okay, thanks. I think I'll let other people ask you questions for the moment.
Huh, maybe it's not, there you go, it's not, it's not fully plugged in. Maybe you could share yours, Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
That's all right.
All right.
This is so lame, we gotta get these--
Okay, my, my primary issue is the parking. The one thing that is glaring is there's ten employees likely on the site at one time, and there are nine parking spaces on the site, and I'm wondering where other, where the employees will come from and where they will park. So, that's one question, maybe better asked of the applicant. But I had a question, if you know this. There's an elevation of one hundred and twenty point eight feet mentioned at the rear of the, of the drive aisle parking lot that's indicated on this, on this plan, and I wondered if, if you could give us the elevation of Broadway?
We can find out.
Okay, so, and then another thing about the parking is that it is recommended in the report that there might be a continuance because there's three alternatives of reconfiguring the, the property on page four, and all of those seem to me that they're going to need a bit of engineering study to, to come up with.
They all move in the, in the, in the direction of more maneuverability.
Right, I mean, it seems to me pretty, pretty tight parking on the one hand. So, yeah, the, the kids' flex area was the item that I thought maybe if that were eliminated, whether or not we could get parking in, you know, a tenth space, but we're only dealing there with one space. We still have ten employees to park, and there are, there are local parking lots around there as well, but I don't think School Street parking lot can be used by anybody, isn't that true? It's private, okay.
And that'd be, as you said, a question to address to the applicant.
Right, okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On page nine, there's, there's a comment about the Marin Municipal Water District and the property's current water entitlement is point seven six acre feet, which will be insufficient for the proposed use. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that process entails, and then I have another question.
You mean getting the water district to grant you more acre-feet usage?
Yes, this additional water entitlement will be, will need to be purchased, so I, I was wondering if you could explain what that really means.
You know, each, each business location has a certain allotment of water, and when you change uses, it often, they acknowledge that you're going to be using more water than the previous business did, and they, they indicate that you're gonna have to purchase more water, but I'm not, I've never been involved in the actual process of what kind of an application you fill out with them. It will cost them more money. They will be paying a higher water bill than the gas station did because, because a restaurant uses more water than a gas station.
Okay, so, a high-pressure water service application must be filed. Do we know if the water flow and the water pressure is adequate?
Those things are all dealt with at, between the provider and also at the building stage, and fire actually gets involved also in terms of the pressure for fire flow. Those are all technicalities that get dealt with from either outside agencies or at the building level.
And there are things that can always be addressed, it's just they add cost. So, it's not, they're not gonna get to the water district, and the water district and the fire department are gonna say there's no way that you can meet our requirements. That usually only happens way up in the hillsides where that they don't, they can't get the water up there, but down here in the center of town, they'll be able to meet any of the water district's requirements, it's just that it will cost them some money, yeah.
And that is true for the lateral on the sewer also, if you look on page eight, which is a very onerous requirement these days also.
I just wanted to chime in there too, for the folks that are new on the commission and, and anyone out there as well. The requirements by the fire department, the sewer department, the water department, those are all their own codes and their own requirements, and the applicants have to negotiate those with those agencies, and I think sometimes people get confused between what we're approving and requiring and what's required by other agencies, and, and just by way of clarification, we can have those, and sometimes when we have conversations with you about them, it does become confusing, so I just thought it would be helpful for clarification. A lot of that stuff is just out of our control, so that's really helpful because sometimes we get people who get frustrated because of that, and we say, that's not our rules.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, add to that, if you recall, Commissioner Hamilton, in your wisdom in the past, when applicants have been, get into the woods on any requirements by the outside agencies and start to question them here, we've actually added a caveat, which I believe are in, is in the resolution, that if the applicant can negotiate with the outside agency and lower the requirement, then that's fine with us, it's between you and them. So, if you approve something based on what they've said in here and then they change it later, we're fine.
That was just a clarification for discussion.
And the resolution that is proposed said that, says that prior issuance, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the water department has to be, has to be taken care of. So, I would say, you know, you wouldn't wanna start digging until you got that, it's pretty critical for a restaurant. Thank you.
So, one other question. My concern is not so much with the number of parking spaces, it's just the safety issue with coming in and going out, and certainly would not feel comfortable knowing what Sir Francis Drake is like with people having to back out of that parking lot onto Sir Francis Drake, that just doesn't seem super safe. So, that's my main concern is the safety, and I was in a parking lot the other day in San Rafael and totally got pinned in in the back, one-way back end of it, and had to sit there for quite some time because cars couldn't get in it. I had to do like a thirty-point turn or something, so that's my main concern. With respect to that safety, I, I'm glad that you brought up the no-left turn. I do recall that there was a no-left turn sign going west on Sir Francis Drake, so you can't turn into the driveway. I also recall a conversation about a no-left turn out of the driveway as well. So, if you're coming out of the driveway on Sir Francis Drake--
You must go right.
--you must go right, you can't go left, because that's also a double crossing over that way very close to an intersection. I don't know if it was noted in here.
I put in a condition that, that the town engineer needs to look at it again and it's, yeah, the traffic engineer, I put something in here about if he, if he requires any other signs for safety prior to issuance of the building permit-- for safety prior to issuance of the building permit, he needs to do that because of those signs.
And I'm not sure whether that's part of the application or part of something the town takes care of, but just as far as safety goes. Yeah, the right turn only at that.
It's important here.
And then the other thing is, Mimi, I think the idea, I remember the idea of having a, being able to drive through the driveway to get out the other side was proposed, and it was a good resolution to this whole kind of tight parking area thing. And I do remember one of the issues was that if the project is approved, for example, say there isn't enough turning radius in the parking lot just to have one entrance and exit. And we have it with through fare, and then that other side gets blocked off because, say, you want to use the bank thing. So, however many years down the road, you can't have that second driveway anymore. It makes the project non-conforming because now you get a bottlenecked parking lot, and it's already been built, and it's already been constructed, and there's no way to reconstruct it to address what the problem that's now created. So, I don't know how to address that, but I do remember that being a.
Well, if I could add, I think if this was going to go back for a little further analysis, if you sort of looked at the three alternatives we put on the table, in conjunction with this other exit, there might be some little, you know, it might be, you don't have to go quite so far in moving the parking lot west to accommodate a turnaround. And then it would be just lovely to have that exit as an interim, if it worked, you know what I'm saying? So, then when that exit goes away, you still have the problem solved. And it would actually make it work better in the meantime. So, that's what's beautiful about the public process right now.
I have a couple of questions for staff. The first being, there's no longer restaurants outside, restrooms outside, only the two that are in the back west side of the building. How many restrooms are required by building code for 106 occupants?
Just the two. And I think they might be able to get away with a unisex one, as long as it met ADA. I would ask the, is their architect here? Yeah, he might be able to answer that question. Do you know if you can get away with one? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, let's wait, that's a question.
I know that two meets it. So, it's, as it's designed, it does meet the code.
Another question for staff. I saw somewhere that the hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that right?
Yeah.
It's going to be open at 6:00 a.m.?
Well, you can address that to the applicant, but since you raised it up, I think it's sort of a conflict with trucks delivering before they're open.
Yeah, and this application was a little bit confusing for staff because they first applied with a number of visions for the project, and then they had to scale back. And so, it was kind of a moving target for us.
And then my other question to staff, and perhaps I just did not read the environmental report clearly enough, but I didn't see an indication of the condition of the town's easement with regard to petrohydrocarbons, and whether that was included in the survey and analysis done for this clearance that is pending on the site. I want to know if we have toxics from the former gas station.
And I will answer it the way they explained it to me. When they look at these sites, they weigh the level in the soil against ripping up Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to try to excavate the soil and replace it. And they had monitored their wells for so long, and it was at such a low level that they did not, and it was eventually going to go away. So, they didn't feel that trying to disrupt traffic, to tear up that road, and to tear up the trees and everything to get it out of there was warranted, is the way they explained it to me.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I'm talking about the right-of-way.
Both Bank Street and Sir Francis Drake were adjacent, and they made the decision not to tear it up.
The report, this is what I do for a living, Norma.
Okay.
The report that came in here, I can't remember, G maybe, Exhibit G, has a diagram. It actually has two diagrams, one you might need a microscope to read. But if you look...
The location of the USTs, you're talking about Figure 1?
Yeah, if you look where the red circles are on that figure, that's the locations of the residual contamination that was being remediated after the underground storage tanks were removed. And so, I believe all of those areas are going to be underneath the paved area. There were some levels of petroleum hydrocarbons above the cleanup standards, but they were deep down. And the state decided that that was not worthy of spending the additional funds to remediate. I have some additional comments.
Because two out of three of those identified areas are in the town's right-of-way that we're getting back.
Are they really?
I don't know.
I think if you look at where Bank Street goes straight across, maybe, maybe they are right on the edge there.
So, may I add something on that? If Bank Street, if you look at the width of Bank Street, Norma?
Yes.
If you look at the width of Bank Street, on the south side of Broadway, the existing Bank Street, and you continue both curb lines across, the actual easement is lined up with the east curb, but it's further east than the west curb. The easement itself is less. But I concur with you that some of the contaminants appear to be under the easement. But I think both prior to this report and this report, that the state's position, correct me if I am wrong, Mimi, but this is, because this is your business, is that the remediation, the act of remediation is taking place. And now it is in the ground, and it will go through its normal biological occurrence. And I'm not sure if this still is the case, since they remediated a lot of the soil, but, Norma, it's actually a plume that's moving east.
I understand, because the land slopes that way. My concern is that it's one thing to have residual toxics deep below a parking lot. It's another thing to have residual toxics on our right-of-way where we may at some point be required to excavate to build a street or a parking lot. If it's a street, it may not be a problem. But if it's an insignificant level that's dissipating, then I don't have an issue with it. But my fellow commissioner just also pointed out that the Pangaea Plan, Figure 1, and the next one, which is A100, locate those areas in completely different places.
On the first map, Figure 1, you can actually read the identification associated with the wells, MW, the MW numbers.
MW2 and B5.
You know, and for some reason, when I looked at this report today that's on the state's website, I thought the two wells that had residual contamination were MW4 and MW8, which are not where those circles are.
I don't know that we need to delve into this any further tonight, but maybe staff can just take a look at that as we move forward.
Well, I also had some comments about sort of trying to see if we could work with the applicant to go above and beyond what the state requires, because we're Fairfax, and we don't like the idea of petroleum hydrocarbons in the subsurface at residual levels. And like I said, this is what I do for a living. I work at the Environmental Protection Agency. I'm an attorney that works on gas station cleanups of petroleum hydrocarbons. And one of the things that I've been really fascinated by are phyto remediation technologies that are being developed various places. It involves things like planting a tree above the contamination, and the tree itself draws up the groundwater and does sort of this, you know, remediation itself, a natural remediation. So, while I was thinking about the idea of losing some trees on one side, and that there was some indication that the applicant would be willing to reseed trees where the town directed, I was wondering if maybe we could, instead of seedlings, put something with a nice, big, healthy root ball right above some of that contamination. And of course, it's going to really depend on where these circles really are. And it may take some creativity in terms of, oh, do you really want a tree right in the middle of your outdoor seating area? Maybe you do, maybe that would be nice.
It looks like they fall in the parking lot.
But I don't know. You know, I think that that's just an idea I wanted to throw out there because it's something that I deal with at work. And I actually have a couple more questions for staff. You know, the resolution indicates that the, there's no residences immediately adjacent to the project. But I note that the downtown area, we are allowing second units on second stories of some of those businesses right near it. Would the fact that there might be people living above some of those businesses, you know, across Bank Street or whatever, or across, you know, Broadway, would that change your analysis at all?
No, it's a commercial zone, yeah.
And then, I'm sorry, Norma, I don't know if you had more questions, but I'm on a roll.
Go ahead.
If, in fact, we thought that it would be a really good idea not to turn left either into the parking lot, or when you're exiting the parking lot onto Sir Francis Drake, would that be something the town would be responsible for ensuring in terms of signage, or would that be something the applicant would be responsible for?
I believe the applicant pays for the sign, but we install it. And the big concern of the traffic engineer was that there's a, you know, a bike lane there. That's why he really didn't want people turning left into that as they travel west or out. Just too much interaction with the bicyclists.
Okay, that's it for my questions for staff. I'll probably have more for the applicant.
Okay, let me get back to a couple of questions. So, is there music or not? Are we asking the applicant?
There's gospel music planned for Sundays between 11:00 and 1:00 with maybe three singers and amplified keyboard. That's what they are asking for right now. And if they want to do anything else, the condition says they need to come back and modify their use permit for live music.
Okay. And I will, well, let me make a comment to staff, and then we can also talk about it with the applicant. I have really serious concerns about the dangerous condition of this parking plan as proposed. I think that, as you mentioned, and our traffic engineer confirmed, that there is not enough turnaround radius when the lot is full. And I'm looking at two things. I like the alternatives that staff presented in the staff report, but I also see that, a couple of things. One, the accessible loading space in this bottom-right corner is huge. It's the size of a regular parking space. Isn't it possible to get away with something much smaller?
No, that's the code.
Because the original plan had a teeny little strip.
Yeah, it was not the code.
Oh, okay.
That is ADA requirements.
Okay. And something else to look at might be that this, though it might not be possible to move the gas, electric, and storage, but that area, if it is possible to move, though the utilities may already be there, I don't know, move them over to the kids' flex area to get them out of the way of the pathway, and it might provide some space to adjust the parking lot over towards the west just a little to give a little more room for turning.
So, that you'll probably want to address to the applicant?
Yes.
Because if it is existing, then that's pretty costly major surgery.
That's true. That's true.
What about, just as a suggestion, if the accessible loading space and the ADA parking area that's next to it were moved to the north one spot, so that you ended up with a parking space at the very end, then on the south end, and then next above the parking space was the accessible loading space at which there would never be a car. And that would be then a place where a car could pull in, back out, as is actually shown there.
Brilliant. And that's exactly what we thought of this afternoon, and it's not allowed by the ADA. You can't use the loading space. By the way, this is a van-sized ADA space with the loading adjacent. And under ADA, Americans Disability Act abbreviated ADA requirements, you can't have that tandem use of their space.
So, you couldn't just back into it to get out?
You cannot use the loading area on the ADA space for the circulation of the lot. We tried, we pushed that same thing. We asked the same thing. And our building official is our ADA compliance officer, so we have to rely on him.
Well, I have other comments, but they're smaller by comparison with the parking issues.
If I could just say, though, if I could just say, if you wanted to eliminate an extra parking lot and parking space, that would accomplish the same thing.
And just to, before we go on, I'll just say, just a general comment, that I think this is a really nice application, and I hope we can resolve these issues because I hope we can move forward. I hope we can move forward in a timely manner so that you guys can get going. But I appreciate all the thought you've put into it. And I'll be back with more questions, but go ahead. I have what I think is a rather technical question for staff. In Proposed Resolution Paragraph 7, it says, notwithstanding Section 17072050, any changes, modifications, additions, or alterations to the approved set of plans will require modification of permit number 15-18. And I'm looking at Ordinance 17072050, which talks about use permits without development permits. And I'm asking you how this applies here.
All that's supposed to mean is that they can't change their plans while they're under construction without coming back to you, so.
While Linda's looking this up, let me just reiterate, this is very important for applicants to understand. We go through all this because you are the regulatory body making sure that everything's in compliance with the code, and if it isn't, it's a good reason and your granting variances were allowed. So, it is important for applicants to understand when something gets approved, that's what's approved is what's on the plan. So, anything that doesn't get built as the plans, even if they go ahead and build it, we'll bring them back in and hold their feet to the fire. And as you know, with some single-family occupancies, they've had to re-modify some roofs or some ceiling heights when things are not done as designed. So, very important for applicants to understand that. And that's, having said that, on occasion, we try to build in flexibility, like we did on 31 Belinas, where some commercial space could be a little flexible, but so be it.
Okay, I don't know if that exactly answers the question, but...
But I think Linda's looking it up, and forgive me if I didn't.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, it just seems to me that this building would qualify under this because it's, well, I guess it's not in an HRD overlay zone.
I'm not sure why that's in there. It should just be eliminated. It should just read, "Any changes, modifications, or additions made to the approved set of plans," that section number should be removed.
Because it's not an HRD overlay.
Yeah, it's not an HRD application. It probably just is a carryover from some other application. But it's still, it's, the condition should just read, "Any changes, modifications, additions, or alterations made to the approved set of plans will require a modification of the permit by the planning commission," so.
Good eye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That was a big question mark. Are there any other questions from the planning commission of the staff on this project before we call the applicant up?
Is this the only time to make some small comments?
No. No, I don't have any other questions at this point.
Okay, then.
Looking forward to hearing from the applicant.
I see we perhaps have a slideshow or something, and so I'm gonna, let me also say, I echo Bruce's sentiment, and that is that I like the project, I think we could use a nice barbecue restaurant, and I think it's a great idea. I noticed some of the townsfolk have written in support, and in fact, it's quite an outpouring. We don't usually get that kind of support. So, you know, clearly, we're generally in favor of your project. Don't worry about that so much as, we've got to get, you know, the devils in the details, as they say. So we need to work all these things out, and parking is a huge issue. So if I can call the applicant up, and then if you want to make a presentation, I guess, before we ask you questions?
Yes, we have a presentation. Is it okay to get a water or two?
And Brian, you might want to introduce yourself, too.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you to the commissioners, Commissioner Chair Green, Vice Chair Hamilton, and to the existing and new chair people. And also, big thanks to Jim and Linda. Linda mentioned it was a bit of a moving target, and that was, in fact, the case, and Jim and Linda helped to really, I think, guide us through getting to where we are tonight, and I really appreciate their work in getting us on the agenda. My name is Brian Back. I live at 38 Geary with my wife Elizabeth and our daughter Annabelle, who's 13 months old. We, I'll tell you a little bit about who we are, what we're trying to do with the project, and then I'll have Sean, our architect, Sean and Maxine, talk a little bit about the site plan. But my name is Brian Back, and I have dedicated my entire professional career to sustainable business, green building, most recently in producing the Building Health Initiative for the U.S. Green Building Council, which had the mandate of reframing green building as a public health issue. And prior to that, is the founder of a magazine called Sustainable Industries, which was pioneering in sustainable business for more than a decade. And my wife Elizabeth has worked heavily in real estate project management, has been very instrumental in that part of what we're doing, and has worked on a lot of solar entitlement and that sort of thing. When the city of, sorry, when the town of Fairfax banded together to oppose the Chevron in a remarkable display of community, it was presumably so something like this could come in its wake. And what we're proposing is, in essence, a new kind of fuel-up station. And we are creating a small, local business that serves the community of Fairfax. It's a true mom-and-pop endeavor. We're bootstrapping it, highly leveraged, and we're very much affected by additional costs and, you know, delays in terms of getting off the ground to be able to fund our dream. We conducted a variety of meet-and-greets with community members, neighbors, residents, to get their input on what they wanted to see in this site. We engaged with the No Chevron in Fairfax Facebook page. We shared our plans on our website. We read the general plan cover-to-cover. And as a result of that, we came up with these plans, which are really intended to be family-friendly. That's why the kids' play area is what it is. It's not so much a flex space as a kids' play area. Was very much coveted by a lot of community members, a safe place on that side of the plan, outdoor seating and oasis for community gathering, something that improves the environmental footprint of a former gas station in eyesore, and then something that gives back to the community, which is why we are planning to do nonprofit fundraising and have already started a new hike group out of the station. So to the design features. We didn't get into much of this yet, but some of the green design features that we have is adaptive reuse of an existing structure. You can just go ahead and, I'll just go through quickly. Passive lighting, heating, and cooling, optimal energy efficiency. We'll do radiant floor heating, for example. On-site water recycling, low-flow fixtures, drought-tolerant landscaping, previous paving in the outdoor garden area. It's solar power-ready on the roof. We're building that structurally. Local reclaimed and non-toxic building materials, and an indoor-outdoor connectivity that we think is very nice as well. Smaller delivery footprint, which I know there's some questions about. And in essence, pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, and less auto-centric. Less auto-centric is really key to our plans. And the next slide shows, the studies show that this project generates much less traffic than the gas station convenience store that paved 75% of the site. One less space will not have a significant impact on traffic or parking, according to the staff report. And we believe that the added parking compromises what we wanted to create in terms of the public benefits of a pedestrian walkway, cyclist-friendly entrance, the kids' area, and the accessibility for the ADA space, and also the landscape buffer that we were asked to produce for Bank Street right-of-way. The general plan prioritizes all these alternative transportation modes, pedestrians, bicycling, public transportation, which is detailed in the staff report. The site is adjacent to three public parking lots, the town's main bus terminal, town center bike lanes. We're going to walk to work within a block and a half away, and we will create employee incentives and produce those for you, if you like, to encourage our employees to use mass transit. There will be six to seven max, by the way, not 10. That was one of the moving target components. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thanks to the commission, and especially to Jim and Linda. My name's Sean Kennedy, and I'm, along with my partner Maxine Skaggs, we're the principals of Studio Skaggs Kennedy and the architects of the station with Brian and Elizabeth. I think it's important, I'll just walk you quickly through the circulation as we envisioned it, and also go into the aspects of the garden and why that's important to maintain that size, and then go into the building a little bit, and then we're happy to answer a bunch of the questions that you had regarding primarily the parking. I guess when we envisioned circulation and getting to the site from a car, you're coming from the west. There's a monument sign that alerts you to the business. You see that monument sign, you pull into the parking lot. You pull into a space, you back out, you pull out, and go to the right. There's no, we don't envision anyone going left, hopefully, you know, no one backing out onto Sir Francis Drake, and it would, and no one taking a left as they come from the east. I think there, I think once we, once I go through this, there are ways to massage the parking lot to get it a little more safe. Maybe it's widening the drive aisle. It is important to point out that we went to nine spaces, because if you look where the trash, the zero-waste facility is at the lower-left corner of the parking lot, if we added another space, we'd lose our pedestrian connection. And walking is one of our primary routes of circulation to the site. We really wanted to reconnect this site to the town, to the center of town and to the west, and really envision that pedestrian walkway as a central component of the design. It's a private owner, but we wanted to create a kind of a public space in Fairfax. You can also get to the site. We're reconnecting to the town parking lot and refurbishing the sidewalk on Sir Francis Drake. And then the third way of getting to the site, and a big part of the project is also biking. We envision you can, as bicyclists ride along, they get onto the pedestrian pathway on Broadway, or they are riding along Sir Francis Drake, pull into the parking lot, demount, and then there are, we're providing bike parking as well onsite, not only to encourage people to bike, but really make it a primary aspect of what you see when you come up to the site, that there's bikes there, that they're a part of this project. Once you get off, once you get to the site, the garden and creating an oasis away from the noise of Sir Francis Drake, and an oasis that people can go to away from, you know, and relax and gather was really important. So perimeter plantings, fences that are attractive, not too tall, but provide a little bit of screening when you're sitting down, eating, dining, meeting with people. And it's also generously planted. I think there is a question of phytoremediation, and we're very aware of what this site used to be. And I think part of the story is that we're taking an auto-centric piece of land that no one could walk to, and really making it accessible to bicyclists and pedestrians. And I think, I mean, I don't know what will happen with the easement. I think from my reading is most of the monitoring wells are either in the parking lot or on the right-of-way, the town's right-of-way. Besides planting big trees, it could be meadow grasses, things that are fast-growing, and it's something I think we would be encouraged to be a part of in developing that. And then I think the real crux of the garden is why a lot of us live where we live. We want to be outside. We want to eat outside. We have a mild climate, and creating that gathering place where you can have good food, local, organic, good food, it was really important. We've worked on a bunch of restaurants, and that aspect of people being outside and really enjoying nature in that way is important to us, and I think very important to Elizabeth and Brian. And just in general, the building, we're really focusing on maintaining generous connections from indoors to outdoors, so there's passive heating and cooling that Brian mentioned, but it's also about getting as much light into the space, so we don't have to use artificial lighting, that we can daylight the space and make it, it's really a part of a larger goal of promoting a healthy lifestyle. And as Brian said, the materials are, we're trying to use warm materials, definitely natural, non-toxic materials, and kind of show them off in a crafted, clean way. And really, the big, one of the biggest, to reiterate the goals, is less auto-centric and really create a gathering place for people in the town, a community place. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have to ask for a clarification, Sean. The drawing that you have up on the screen is not the drawing that we have in our packet. Could you explain why? So, just, okay, I would just like to articulate a couple of things, since you're looking at something that is not actually the same as the plans before you. The traffic engineer stipulated that there needs to be a sidewalk all the way along Sir Francis Drake. On Plan Set A1.00 on your packet, that is there, okay? The monument sign is not flush against the curb. It's set back behind the sidewalk in the plans before you.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right, they have the plans, that's okay. Yep. I'm just trying to articulate the difference between...
We have the one, you have...
Yeah. And I'm doing this, Sean, because the public at home right now is looking at what's on the screen. So I'm trying to get on the record that if you're looking at home, either live right now, or you're in the audience, or you're looking at a tape, you should go to the town's website, you should pull up this item on the internet, on the town's item, and you should avail yourself to the plans that are actually subject to consideration. And for example, the sidewalk along Sir Francis Drake on the plan being shown here on the screen does not also include a four-foot strip of either planter or sidewalk on the east side of the parking lot, which we asked to be put in. The parking lot does not go flush to the easement in the plans before you. There's a couple other things on the left side of the parking lot, but we don't have to get in the woods. I just want to, it's, I just want to point out that it's very important to be consistent in what the public is reviewing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I, may I add a word to the present, to the applicant's presentation?
Yes, I was just thanking Jim for that clarification. Sure, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Back, and thank you very much for hearing our application this evening. Everything's already been said. I just wanted to add something to the vision that Brian and I have always felt so strongly. We fell in love with this property long before it was for sale because it is the center and the heart of our town, and it deserves to be a beautiful space and a beautiful garden for our community, so that we can come together to create meaningful social interactions with one another. And the heart, for me personally, of this project has always been the children's play area. We never once have contemplated it as flex space, nor as an applicant have we ever written about it as flex space. This has always been a vision as a children's play area. I actually have already purchased from the beach house the chairs and the children's chairs and the tables that I've envisioned for the space. Maxine and I have already planned the chalkboard and the chalk, and our landscape architect participating in imaginary play structures. So I know we didn't detail the things that we have already been planning for that area, and I thank you very much this evening for your consideration for the children's play area, as that is the heart of the project for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we usually go into our own discussion of the project at this point, so that you can hear what we're thinking. If any of our...
Mr. Chair, just in case there's someone from the audience here, you might offer someone from the audience.
All right. So if anybody from the audience has a comment, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Seth Goddard. I'm a resident of Fairfax, 12 Marin Road, and I'm just calling, or calling. I'm on the phone a lot. I'm coming by to support this project and support you, the planning commission, in bringing this to reality, making this happen. Please don't delay. It's taken a long time for a gas station to become something a little bit more useful for this town, and if the cost of all of this is one parking space, I actually consider that sort of a reward, that we get more pedestrians, we get better walkability, we have a new feature in town, a new place to come and to hang out for families and for people coming through the town of Fairfax. So I really want to just emphasize that it's taken a long time for this, and I'm not sure that the staff has shown you any reason for this to take even longer. Their recommendation that you move to approve it is written, and I just really want to support you in doing that, and that to delay feels like it would be just a bureaucratic measure and not something that would actually reward the town. Because I think the plan that they have put forward is just phenomenal, and it meets all the requirements, and it saves us a parking space and go put it someplace else. There's a very high cost of free parking, and that one space will cost this project a lot of time, and I'm not quite sure it's worth it. So please, feel free to act, and let's move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Actually, when you're done, if you could turn the microphone off, but that's okay. Next person, thank you.
Anything else to comment? Great, thank you. My name's Tim Natick, Fairfax resident also, 91 Mirna, 17 years, and extremely excited to learn about this project, and I felt like it was important to come here and voice my support to it, because like the previous speaker had mentioned, it's such an innovative use of a space that has, for a long time, been an eyesore, and even before that, you know, as a use as a gas station. Now we have something incredibly innovative that's going to bring together the community. And I also have a 10-year-old daughter and feel very strongly about creating safe spaces for all of us as a community, including kids. So the concept and the use is extremely exciting to me, and I wanted to voice my support for it and encourage you to also support this project as well and help to move it forward, because I think it'll be a big impact on the community. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. I want to, I want to just address one thing about the idea that this might be some kind of bureaucratic decision if we have to delay or continue, and that is, no, it isn't. We generally like the project, I get the feeling, the sense here, that everybody likes it. It's, to me, it's a beautification of a really ugly thing, and it is very central to Fairfax. If we make a decision tonight that we have to delay, it's because of some details, some engineering details, especially over parking and things like that. So it's not, there's no sort of bureaucratic aspect to delaying, we don't want to delay projects like this, we want them to move forward, and I just wanted to make that comment. I've had a request from several members up here for a five-minute break, so if you, if you all don't mind, if that's okay with you, staff, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. So at nine o'clock. Reconvene, and just to remind you, we're sort of still in the section of a debate here and talking to the applicant on this project. So are there any, I have a question for the applicant, actually, and that is, what, what incentive, a couple of questions. First of all, is very concerned about the employees' parking needs, and so what incentives are you offering to employees to not drive and not park in your facility?
Well, we haven't, we haven't formalized the plan yet, but from the starting point, we're going to create an ability for them to have their money that goes towards their transit costs be tax deductible out of their paycheck, which is a benefit that I think is offered by the state. And then in addition, we will reserve, especially with, in our bike racks, employee bike racks as well, that are especially set aside for them. Those two things are our starting point, and we're certainly happy to entertain more options and could even consult with Sustainable Fairfax on ideas for that.
Okay, well, just, just, just a point on, Marin is famous for having a problem for, about employees, and that is that most of our employees who work here don't live here. And I know people who drive from places like Vallejo and the East Bay to come here to work. How will you address those issues?
As far as recruitment of employees or the long commute distances?
Right, I mean, those who may have to drive...
Well, I mean, we certainly would want to encourage public transportation for those that have a longer commute, and those that are more local, we want to encourage walking and biking. I'm certainly happy to delve further into that, you know, when it comes to policies that could help incentivize that. We do know that, that offering tax deductible funds for their mass transit is one way to get them savings, to encourage that.
Okay, I agree, that's a good idea, actually. And then the other thing you mentioned is your roof is going to be solar-ready, why not, why not install solar?
We very, we very well may, we just, from the point of where we are now in terms of designing the ceiling structure, wanted to make sure we have the capacity. We have every intention of bringing it on as soon as we can, we can financially do it, and I think that'll be in the near term.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions?
First of all, I want to applaud you on this design. I was tickled and felt like I was opening up a Christmas present when I started to look at it, considering what was there before. So I really support this project, I really wanted to go forward. I do have some concerns about the parking, and just in this break right now, we were talking about the possibility of opening up that parking a little bit more, and it looks like we can gain about four feet, possibly. I would suggest, recommend that you revisit the parking because I think, you know, aside from the count, I mean, the count is one issue, but I think if you can offset that with the safety, improve safety, right now, I kind of feel like it's not safe going out from there or backing out. I would, you know, some of us are better drivers than others, and I don't want my insurance to go up, but, so I would really push for you to look at that. That's one thing. I had another question about the wall, this is a design question. The wall on the sidewalk, I wanted to know a little bit more about that. Looking at the drawings, it looks like it's seven feet tall. I'm five foot oh, and it's black and solid, and to me, that feels a little unfriendly. I love the color black, and I think it's a very sexy building, but the unfriendliness of that, that wall on the sidewalk, I think is something that I would like to see addressed, either by toning it down a shade to charcoal or gray, or punching holes in it so that you can kind of get glimpses of what's going on on the other side, which I think would be actually alluring.
Right.
But I just, I, when I looked at it, I loved it, but then I thought, ooh, I wouldn't want to walk along that fence.
Are you, are you talking about A421?
I'm looking...
A421, yes.
So on the left side, it being tall?
It's the street view from Sir Francis Drake Boulevard.
I think, just to give you a short description of why we did that, we all know that Sir Francis Drake can be busy.
Yeah.
And there's trucks, and so there's not only vibration, but there's noise. And it's also to create a high enough fence that when you're sitting down in that area, you're not seeing all of that traffic go by. So it's, it's trying to create a more relaxed area. Once you're in that space, I think the idea is that you're still in the sun, you're still looking to the east, to the redwoods, and looking back into the building, so creating that oasis that we, that we had described in the project description.
Right.
So I think, right down on the end where you enter the project is probably the highest point. Up on the, on the right-hand side of the drawing, we're envisioning that, that to be about three foot six, where it says sidewalk grade, because there's, that's the high point of the site.
It says four foot six.
Okay, so four foot six.
Okay. That's better.
And that would be, and so it's higher at the left hand, left end, but it doesn't turn and go into the, into the site at all.
It slopes up a little bit.
It slopes up.
But that's because the roadway also goes down.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, we could, we could look at, you know, maybe stepping the fence, but, but...
Yeah.
Part of leaving it at one level is to keep it somewhat clean and just reduce visual clutter at some point.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's just, because of my height, I, you know, I notice these things, and, and, you know, I would like it to remain dark, and, you know, I think the tire tread pattern, I mean, I know it's, it's not that, but it...
No, it, it, there's a little bit of that.
There's a little bit of that. You know, I, like I said, I was really happy to see all the thought that went into the design. It's just, the sidewalk is so narrow...
Right.
And people walking there, it's not very friendly, so I would recommend that you take a look at that.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I was really disappointed to see the communal sink go away. In one of the other iterations, I think it was in this one, there was a communal sink.
Right.
And I think if there's a way to put that back in, especially adjacent to the children's, the kids' area, I think, you know, having a water feature there for the kids is going to draw them there, and it, bikers are going to be coming, or, I'm sorry, cyclists are going to be coming.
Right.
And it'd be a great way to kind of, you know, freshen up in this, it, those communal sinks are really, really cool, very great.
Yeah, we, part of it, why it was there before is because we had the additional bathrooms when the, when the space was larger.
Right.
And, and I think while we, you know, we liked that idea, I think when that, when the bathrooms went away, if you have a sink, I worry a little bit about water splashing and, and, you know, and just, we're going to have to have a drain for it if it's used for kids and things like that.
You're talking about on the outside?
Yeah.
On the backside of the toilets?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I'm, you know, that's...
But I like, I like the communal, yeah.
Yeah, or having even mist come down, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff that's used where, in hot environments, where it's not water necessarily, but mist, and it's just, it's a nice feature. I'm not going to, you know, vote against it because it's not there, but I would like to see it come back. Another question, I, you know, I also noticed the hours of operation, did it say from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and I was wondering if that was an error or if it was just when people get there, you know, to work?
That was also part of our initial general description, and we actually have not finalized those hours yet, so we're not entirely sure what they will be. We know we also have to allow for early delivery times, so we're very aware of making that so that it works.
Okay, I think it's in the resolution, so I would maybe modify that part.
And you should stipulate the hours that you desire when we get to that point.
Yeah. What time does Iron Springs close? No, I'm just curious. I know a lot of stuff shuts down at nine during the weekdays, and if this were next to a residence, I would say nine o'clock, you know?
But that is something you'll want to articulate in your findings. It's not something that's left post-approval, it's something you have to...
Yes, no, and I, because it is in the resolution as stated as...
And that's what, the last time we heard, that's what...
Right, right. I was just curious, I know a lot of stuff shuts down at nine o'clock during the weekdays.
Billy Baran Springs is open till...
Seven days a week.
Yeah, Billy Baran Springs is open pretty late on, at least some days of the week, open until midnight.
Yeah, I mean, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are different. We don't have residents, you know, adjacent necessarily to worry about, but, but I think, I think we should talk about an appropriate time.
Well, yeah, I was kind of looking forward to having a place that was open late myself, but just to throw out...
We would like to open up early. Our model is for a breakfast and coffee service in the morning, and also for, on the cyclists that come.
Yeah, because you're, you've got people coming from the west, can pull in there easily, so.
Okay.
So you did want to open up early?
That's right, yeah. Maybe not perhaps as early as six.
And that, that creates a bit of a conflict with the delivery trucks.
When do the trucks come?
Because the earlier you open, if the trucks are going to come before you're open, then you've got, we're back to the Good Earth issue before six in the morning.
Except you don't have the residences necessarily.
Actually, the residents on Klaus are just as close as the residents that are disturbed by the Good Earth.
And the canyon, the canyon up on Roca Drive, it echoes right up there. I can tell you from hearing the Fairfax Market trucks.
But you don't have the, the large trucks with the...
Good point.
Maybe the beeping back, backing up features...
And I'm not trying to, I'm just bringing it up as something to consider, not trying to direct you on your outcome.
Well, and maybe there's a way to distinguish on the resolution, it talks about hours of op, business hours of operation are, so I don't know if there's like operations and business hours, you know, that we can...
Delivery hours, you would stipulate delivery hours.
Yeah, delivery hours, so people can show up early, but it doesn't mean that they have to be open for business.
Well, that is, that is, that's a situation in that, you mentioned you were having delivery trucks come when the restaurant is closed, but if it's open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that doesn't, that doesn't allow too much time.
We might suggest then, as an alternative to that, doing 7:00 AM on weekdays and 6:00 AM on the weekends.
By that, I mean, 7:00 AM Monday through Friday?
That's right, yes, to allow, allow the delivery trucks more time in the morning on the weekdays.
Okay, well, thank you for being flexible on these things. Any other comments for the...
Yes, I do.
Generally, this is a great project, and I echo what a number of people have said about kind of the, I think, the enthusiasm for the overall project, the contribution to our community, and I just wanted to encourage you to work or to hear a lot of our comments as oftentimes, the more we get into the meat of things, it really means that we want a project to work, that we're willing to sit here and like wrestle with it and give this option and that option, and go back and think about this, this, and this, and we're up here putting in as much, what, what might sound like nitpicking detail or like, gosh, they really don't like it because they're really wrestling with this and this, it's actually, my experience being up here, the more we spend time wrestling with it is because we like the project and because we're trying to be collaboratively brainstorming and problem-solving with you so that, I just, I'm just encouraging you to hear that effort from us, not as a negative, because sometimes it sounds technical and, oh, they're getting into something, but as a real positive, being that we're up here wrestling with you to make it work, because we're all up here like saying, okay, we want to make this work, how do we do it? So I just wanted to do, to encourage you to hear it that way. At least, that's the way I'm feeling, so. I do think that we need to put in the whereas language, I don't know if an hour delivery time from 6:00 to 7:00 AM in the morning is going to be sufficient for trucks, so I would say that we should stipulate delivery hours, small trucks, no backup beeper trucks. We've had an issue with that, I don't know if we can stipulate the, you know, small trucks that do not require backup beepers, because we've had that be a requirement of the trucks, like it's some sort of licensing something for trucks. So if it's going to be early in the morning because you want to be open, then I think we do need to stipulate that the, the delivery hours then would be from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM.
Or even 4:00 AM to 7:00 AM?
Five.
Five?
5:00 AM, 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM, possibly, as long as they were stipulated that they're not those noisy, so the issues that we've had in the past with trucks have been the pshhh noise with the brakes and the beep 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 in the backup. So if they are truly the smaller trucks that don't pshhh with the brakes and beep 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 at 5:00 AM, and we can say that so that we don't have to argue about it later.
Can you spell that?
Pshhh. You know, I think, I think a 5:00 to 7:00 AM would be fine as long as that, that noise wasn't there for me, but I think we would need to stipulate that. I don't have an issue with the 10 o'clock at night, personally. It sounds like, as long as the music is just stipulated on Sundays, you said between nine and 11?
11:00 AM and 1:00.
11:00 AM and 1:00 on Sundays, so we don't have to worry about that. Again, my issue is not with the number of spaces, it's with the ability to turn around in there. So I do think we are going to have to continue this because I think, you know, you need an architect, engineer architect to do up the plans. We need to have, we, what we're approving is what we're given, and we need to be given something that's done with appropriate, with the calculations that will certify to us that, yes, a car can get in here and do the turning radius calculations that, like Parisi did. So for us to be able to approve it, we can tell you what we'd like, we can give you some options that we would think would be reasonable for you to go massage, like maybe look at something with one less parking if you had to look at the four-foot, the four-foot thing on the side there, look at all the different options that you have. It's always a matter of trade-offs. I love the kids' parking, I mean, the kids' area, but what we do up here is like, it's all trade-offs to fit this Rubik's Cube together, so you need to look at that and know that the safety and the egress and ingress in there is a, it just can't be that way, so you...
It seems if we were to reduce, we'd love to take one space away, unless we could say that taking a space away, and that's a condition, and that will give us the space on approval of the town's engineer, but it seems that giving more space to the drive aisle is more doable in terms of a condition of approval, knowing that staff isn't going to sign off on it without an engineer to look at it. And so, in interest of not coming back to you with, you know, oh, we moved to two feet, you love the project, that to us seems like something that is workable, because we've worked with Jim and Linda on this before. So I, I don't know about the space, the space seems, while we would love to get rid of one extra parking space and give more turnaround space, I think 26 feet, when we had talked with Parisi or heard comments before, is adequate for a turn... is adequate for turnaround space within a drive aisle.
And again, we're not experts, so you're going to have to get it approved by the experts. And then we just go look at that and say, that's what the expert said was okay. And I can't, and, and we can't tell you if you do this, we will definitely approve it. You know, we can come up with our ideas here, but you're definitely going to need to get engineer architect come back with plans for us to see and have it been sort of.
That couldn't be a condition, I don't know, that couldn't be a condition of approval. Okay.
In my opinion, I, we need to see, we approve the plans that we see here and, you know, we can approve like a planting plan and leave it, but something that's as serious as safety and, and circulation. I don't think I've ever seen us approve anything without that.
Yeah. I, 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 I hear you. I, some of the comments that came late in the game, we're sort of reacting to here as opposed to having time to look at them. So, I'm just trying to find a way that possibly we could.
If I could just clarify, the idea of eliminating a space and that we came up with and Bruce, you mentioned also is an option. We see as an option, we just, it needs to be tested by engineer basically. An architect isn't necessary. It's, 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 you know, really, and we'll, let's put it this way. If, if Sean wants to lay it out, we'll get it looked at by Parisi also if that, if we just keep going that way. We, we will have our engineer look at it. If Sean wants to draw it up with one less space for the turning radius and show us the template, Parisi will check it out.
And I'm suggesting that as an option, I, I would not, if, if I were you, I wouldn't come out, come back with that being the only option because that's a greater variance. It's one less parking space. So, I, I would say you could look at that as an option to offer. Certainly, if it was the, you can't, there's no way to do it at all. I, I don't want, I want to see this project work. But I wouldn't come back with that being the only option that you came back with personally.
So, if I'm understanding right, what, two things that could be considered. One would be to eliminate one more parking space and you could model that if you, if you wish to. And I, but I agree that that's something that there could be pushback on that. So, the other thing it sounds like would be to eliminate this four-foot walkway that's over here on the east side as a, and that would give you 26 feet instead of 24 feet as the, as the center area.
Actually, 28. It would be 28, but we, we would have to, we would have to think through that and come back with our learned opinion about why or why not. That's not a good idea. And again, the way you frame the, the one space going away for the turning, again, that's just an idea. We're not the traffic engineer.
Both of those need to be modeled.
And it's just like finding out that we couldn't use that loading space on the ADA space. I mean, it seems so intuitive and yet there's a reason not to. So, it's, that's where the engineer's signature is so important on these approvals so that we don't get in harm's way with approving something substandard and we end up holding liability.
But I would, in, in regard to continuing to think about the parking, my, my personal feeling anyway is not to try to open up into Broadway for the reasons that we talked about earlier, that that's, that's probably not a permanent solution. And so, we need to figure out how to make it without that. And there is that elevation issue there and it's crossing a sidewalk. And there is a line of sight thing even the way it is right now with, even without Bank Street going through. There's a line of sight issue. It's a, it's a dicey place to come out. So, I would rather see, you use essentially what you've got now, but adjust it in order to make that turnaround possible. So, no one will ever have to back out onto Drake.
Could I, could we ask for a clarification on what Parisi said? Because the, previously he had approved the turnaround and the analysis. So, I just, I want to be sure as we move forward and we can work together with each other.
If you recall, we, we sort of pushed him to get his review back to us on your revised plans really hard. And unfortunately, what happens when we expedite things, sometimes mistakes are made. So, we had a point of order question this afternoon. We conferred with his office and he confirmed that yes, 24 is not going to make it possible for most larger, for larger cars to turn around and come back out. So, you know, this is, this is the, the reason that from the applicant's side, it behooves you to understand the geometry involved with these critical issues. And if you wanted to hire your own traffic engineer and dispute with Mr. Parisi's office confirmed with me this afternoon, that's within your purview. But we rely on the learned professionals for guidance on these things, for liability issues as well as safety, primarily safety. So, I would just ask you, do you have any information that counters what his office told us today? That people will be able to turn around in this parking lot when it's full?
So, they can head out.
So, they, so they, if the parking, let me just, let me just frame this very carefully, Sean. If the parking lot is full and a car comes into the parking lot, how will they get out?
Well, I can only, I can only, I can only point to the turning radiuses that we were, we use that are standard turning radiuses.
Those are for cars in the spaces.
Sure, sure. So, if you pull in and you pull to one side of the lot, you, when you back out, no, it's not, it's not a, it's not a turnaround. We, we, I think we're acknowledging that to, to make this site into usable by a semi truck is just against what we want to see for this site.
No, but for a regular car.
For a regular car, it would, it would require a, you know, four or six-point turn. So, I think it's doable, given the turning radiuses that we've been dealing with and talking through with Parisi.
But we, we didn't in our discussions get into the woods on this piece. And you're not a traffic engineer.
No.
So, the commission, if I hear you correctly, is having a problem with the idea of the parking lot being full and how people get back out onto Sir Francis Drake. And that's where we're at.
Yeah, we, we hear that.
That's a quick question. When, when the traffic engineer said 24 feet was not viable, did he offer an alternative number that was? When he said 24 feet wasn't, he didn't say 26.
These are standard calculations that are easily available. So, we can get that. But again, we don't usually put the traffic engineer in the position of designing a project. They review your design.
Sure, sure. We understand.
Well, I mean, just, just think of it in these terms. If, if one car had to back out on Sir Francis Drake because the lot was full and they had an accident because of that, it's not worth it, is it? Because you want community. So, I thought Bruce had a great idea though. I, I thought if, if all or part of the four-foot area could be eliminated, you know, I don't know how the town would feel about that in the future frankly because of the need for perhaps a sidewalk along the future extension of, of Bank Street. But that might, that might be some suggestion to look into.
I, I think, I'd like to offer up another option, knowing that in discussions with Jim and Linda, that there, there is a desire to have that four feet. Knowing that, and we could, I don't have it at hand, but there, there were plans that showed 26 feet as a drive aisle being sufficient from the Parisi's viewpoint and it, they go way back. And we, we could shift the left side of the parking lot over without compromising the connection. It would just, it would rearrange that. And I guess why I'm bringing that up is, is that there are options. And so, we hear that you guys are, are listening to those. And that's why I had brought up earlier that I know with, working with Jim and Linda, if it was a condition of approval, we, we, we could have an engineer sign off on this. And the project wouldn't go forward if the engineer didn't. And, and I was only saying that to, if that was a way that, a project that we all want to go forward and not continue for another month, that I was just putting that out there and, and seeing if that had any merit.
Here, here's the, here's the issue from staff standpoint, from my standpoint, is that these things are hard to think through on the fly. So, it would be better from my standpoint, I think Linda would concur with me, if you want to kick this back for these issues, then we sit down with the applicant and any learned professionals they want to bring in, or if you want to have Mr. Parisi join us for a meeting and we can sit down and work through it and then look at the options, put them in a hard drawing and come back. And then you also get the benefit of staffs looking at the direction that the applicant went because as Commissioner Hamilton said, there's many ways to go. It's not just the planter box, which we need time to think through because of the disposition of Bank Street in the future. What does that mean? And then we can frame the choices for you in our next staff report as to whether we think that's the way to go or another way. And we won't even know whether we fall on that side of the pushing the, widening it or another side until we go through a process of analysis. So, I, I, again, I think what, what got us sort of to this 95% point right now where we can't go 100% is to try to rush things along. And now we're at the point where we've hit another issue that from my standpoint, backing out on Sir Francis Drake is a poison pill. So, I think that's not our fault. It's, it's, it is a flaw in the design right now that needs to be addressed by the applicant.
I, I hear that. And I, I, my, my problem here is, is that we were given basically three alternatives on page four that, that to me are, you know, screaming for a continuance in a study. And that's, that's sort of my thought.
Can I address those alternatives?
Well, I'd also like to, yeah, I'd also like to ask the commissioners and staff about, you've said you would be, you could eliminate one parking space and would that eliminate, would that eliminate these problems if they, if they did that?
I think what we've heard from staff is that any solution will need to be reviewed by an engineer.
Yeah, and can I just say, I'm not a traffic engineer. I just wanted to get people thinking about the fact that there are a number of ways to address modifying this parking area. And, and, you know, reworking the floor, the interior floor plan can affect the project. So, we were just trying to point out to you that there are alternatives to what the applicants have proposed. There's always alternatives.
And, and we don't like parking either, but unfortunately, parking's a reality. And just like with employees, they, if they come by a car, they're going to park somewhere. Hopefully, they won't, but in reality, most do. So, there's some issues still that you've zeroed in on.
And the part, the number, the number, I can live with the nine, but the fact that at the final hour, we discovered that, that you're going to have people back, potentially backing out onto Sir Francis Drake, that's not going to work.
And with all respect, when Linda says she can live with it, we don't decide, you decide. It's just with terms of staff's recommendation.
Safety issue, you know, that's pretty clear.
I'd also like to echo that I, I love your vision and your design for this disastrous site that's so difficult to work with. You've done a remarkable job. It, it looks fabulous. The fire pits are awesome. The fire pits are great. My biggest concern is not so much the loss of one space, one parking space to grant a variance, but if you start making it two spaces, it becomes, as other commissioners have said, makes it less and less conforming, makes it more difficult for us to make that call. And I also think that there, there could be enough space in here, sure. You know, cut these up and move it a foot or two this way, move it a foot or two that way to get, I think if you had 26, it might work, 26 foot clear. So, you're talking about scooching things over a foot in each direction.
But we don't, we don't know that yet.
We don't know that, but it, it's, it's an option. You have, you have a very extensive outdoor space. I don't know if there's some way that that can be moved east for a foot or two to give you that leeway. I would, I would rather see that and perhaps give up a skosh, I don't know, on the, on the four-foot side. Obviously, you need to keep something, but if you could find a foot to move things over to give you that extra two feet, that would be my preference rather than coming back to us and saying, okay, we're going to just do eight parking spaces. Because with eight spaces, you could still have that same problem of the lack of turnaround space and someone backing out. And if you're as successful as you hope to be, and I think you could be, this could be something to really come back and bite you later on where you don't have the option to shift things a foot here or there. I don't have a problem with a variance for one space, but I would rather see a different design for the parking lot. I also don't have a problem with the signage providing a variance for the signage because of the nature of the site. And I think you've done something incredibly attractive that I, I really commend you for and for your spirit of bringing community together and providing pedestrian and bicycle access. I think you're very much in keeping with the vision of the general plan. And I seldom see anything this appropriate before us, but that really is a stickler. And also, you know, in reading, in reading your other requirements, you have to submit quite a number of plans for your sprinkler system, your water system, your, your easements and sidewalks. You're not going to get those done in 30 days. So, I don't think that we're the ones who are going to hold you up because of a 30-day extension. Obviously, I understand. You, you've got skin and money on the game and, and we're not quite there. But I know staff will be very accommodating to work with you. It might not be as complicated as you think it is, but we do need our engineer to sign off on the safety of this turnaround radius. And it's not so much, I think the problem was that he looked at a truck coming into an empty lot, pulling in, pulling back out, getting out of the site. I don't believe he assessed it with a full lot. And I believe that's the crux of your problem right now. It seemed to me that there's a bit of space behind the trash enclosure and that green area in front of spaces eight and nine. Maybe there's some way to gain some space there. I'm, I'm not sure. Because this one compact, number seven seems to be skewed. The dotted li, the dotted lines are skewed, so I'm not sure, does that space actually move all the way up to the sidewalk, to the, to the entryway? I don't know if this wall where you're putting your bicycles would be something that could easily be shifted a foot or so. You have, I think, a four-foot wide entrance to the outdoor seating and then at least two and a half feet of a wall that angles. You might be able to, you know, just get a couple of feet in there that might make the difference for you. Other than that, I, I love the project. I, I'd love to approve it tonight. I just have some real concerns, especially hearing from Mr. Parisi today. And that's it.
I, just one point of, of clarification is I think what I'm hearing is, is, you know, nine spots is acceptable. And I'm not holding anyone to that. But moving the, the left bank of spaces to the left, maybe two feet is, is, is probably doable. We have space. I, I think in the alternatives that we were looking at and that we were working with Jim and Linda, I think there was a notion that we could push much more into, into the space. And what we found was we. And what we found was we really limited or eliminated a connection from the west to the east. And that was one thing we really strove to, to keep, the pedestrian connection. The previous use permit showed that connection happening through a parking lot. That to us is, is, is not doable. That, I, just for many reasons. And, and it's also a way of, of creating space at the entry of, of the building. So, and, and adding that 10th spot would completely eliminate that. So that was where, how we got to where we're at. And I, and I do believe, you know, a couple extra feet, maybe, you know, one on either side or two on one.
Might, might just do it for you. What about, I had a question earlier about moving the gas, electric and storage. Is that already plumbed in there?
It's, it's not.
Because?
But it's, but it's tough to find other space, maybe.
That's a big chunk of space.
Yeah. I mean, from, we need to make sure we have, from an operational standpoint, that there's adequate storage for outdoor seating so it doesn't get stolen at night, just different things that occur.
Oh, it's that type of storage?
Yeah, it, it's for, and that, that stuff isn't sitting out or, you know, or people are walking off with it.
Right.
Or you have chains attached to every one of your tables. Not, not desirable from an operator's standpoint.
You do have, you do have a chunk of space. I love the kids' flex area, but you do have about 12 by 30 feet there.
Yeah.
Maybe some of that could be storage and this could be shaved back, just enough to give you that foot and a half.
Where we, we would want storage in that area would be close to the building and we wanted the kids' area at least closer to the building, that the notion of having it out towards the road. Ultimately though, I, I think as a, as one of our main goals to be a family-friendly, kid-friendly place, we, we want to maintain that.
No, I, I agree. That's the perfect place for the kids' area, but there is like a corner where the restrooms used to be designed. That might be a niche where you could do some storage. I don't know, just something else to think about.
I'm not sure if that would, that would help the parking that much. We would have to move it 10 feet and then.
You might, you might be right.
We go back to eliminating the connection and the entry space. So I, I, I hear your suggestions on getting some extra space.
Here's where I, here's where I think we're at. I, I think we're at a situation where we all like the design, so you're, this is a three-part application, so the design review, I think you're sort of a shoe-in on that. I think you've got that. That may change a little bit with, with some parking. I think what we need to do though now is get back to the engineer and Mr. Parisi and see what we need to do. And then you, once they determine what the parking requirement will need to be, then you can figure, I mean, I've sat up here frankly and drawn some alternatives myself on this plan where I can see it could be reasonably done. So, and I'm no engineer at all, I'm an attorney, so it's, don't listen to me. But the idea is, I think we need to go back to the engineers and, and, and take a look at the parking situation, see what they recommend. You know, hopefully we can accelerate everything to get on next month's agenda because I have a feeling we're all kind of on board with a continuance because of this huge question mark. And I wouldn't myself want to tolerate one accident because of this. And, and you know, it's, it's a community, yeah, absolutely, it's a community-friendly project and it's going to be a wonderful addition and I wish it had been here for the last 20 years. So my, my feeling is that, you know, if, if I'm talking to the other commissioners here at the moment is, is seeing if you're all kind of on board with that idea. We have a continuance, we get the, the technical specs that we need, and then you can make a redesign. Some, I don't think it's going to be a lot of redesign based on those technical needs and then we'll come back in a month and, and more than likely, can't guarantee, but if the, if Mr. Parisi has a lot of influence up here, so if he, if he passes on it, then we would be more inclined.
Yes, I, I concur just, and I, as Shelley has said, we don't, we cannot promise something that we'll do next month because more things come up in the course of the discussion. For example, tonight I hadn't seen this issue until I came to this meeting. I hadn't thought about someone pulling into the lot while it's full and having to get back out. So it's important to, to make sure everything has been figured out before we give the final okay. But my inclination right now would be that, that nine spaces and the ability to, that a traffic engineer agrees with, that the, the ability to pull in and then pull back out even when the lot is full, not with a truck, but with a car. That would, that sounds good to me. I definitely think that that is going to happen. That scenario will happen because the visibility of the parking lot from the street as you're coming in eastbound on Drake is, is not good. And that's not normally a problem, except that's going to cause that exact issue to happen. There will be cars that pull in there and go, well, now I'm trapped. So we just need to solve that. And I think you've heard a number of different approaches to solving it. So just, I would suggest that you talk with Mr. Parisi and just say, what if we do this? What if we do that? And come back with as many options as you can. Thanks.
Yes.
I've, I am not one to favor parking over people, to put it mildly. So I completely agree with and respect what you, what you're doing and I think it's a great plan. I like the design. I like what you're, what you're looking to do in the community. I like the forward-thinking, many different aspects of it. So let's make it work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple other non-parking related questions for the applicant. I was a little confused about the number of trees that were envisioned to be removed. There was some statements in the submittal from March that suggested there were two redwoods that were going to be removed, but then the, the diagram we've all been looking at, A100, there seem to be six trees contemplated removed. So I, I'm just wondering if you guys could clarify that.
And also just, if I could just jump in for a second. It's fine if you want to do it right now, but since we're going to have this month and we'll be doing another staff report, we can also try to clarify exactly what, we will, whether you have this conversation or not right now, we will clarify what's coming out and what isn't.
Well, I just was going to go over my questions. You can answer them now, you could answer them when we come back because that does look like the way we're doing.
And I was just talking about the trees, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's six trees that are, but they're, most of them are, I, I think you would have a hard time finding an arborist that would, that would support keeping them. And I love trees. But some of them are, are not in, in very good shape, so.
And I'm not challenging it, I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And then the children's wall, I know that there were some discussions with staff about not having it on the Broadway side of the building because it might, you know, not be a good place for people to go look at it. And then I thought I saw that maybe you would put it on the other side in the, in the children's play area. Is that what you guys were thinking with that wall?
I, I think that would be a good place to relocate it. And at staff's recommendation to take it off of a, a street where, and a wall that isn't viewable close up.
Not to mention upstate.
Yeah.
Well, and someone's got to paint it too, so they'd have to be.
I think, I think the intention originally was that it was visible from the ball fields and, and as you were approaching the site, and less of a get up close and see you sign the drawing kind of thing.
And can you clarify the number of seats? There was one suggestion it was 50/50, but another that there were 53 indoor and 43 outdoor?
I, I think the report says 96.
Okay.
From my recollection.
So the report said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so the reason that I mentioned the AstroTurf to staff is because often with AstroTurf, which I think is what you were talking about using for the play area, if I'm mistaken, they use this little pellets or crumbs to keep it weighted down and that stuff is.
No, there would be no, it wouldn't be sport turf. It would be the synthetic grass, but with no granular material below it. It would, it would have a, like a playground, the, the soft mat or something and we can try to find more details with our landscape architect. But no, the granular material, we wouldn't be using that.
Yeah, because they make it a lot of the time out of recycled tires and they're finding that it has hazardous constituents and that. And they use it for playgrounds and stuff. I just think it's, just FYI, you're aware, way from the recycled tires for kids. Do we know what the status of the existing sampling and monitoring wells for the hydrocarbon remediation? Are they going to leave any of those sampling wells, do you know? Or are they going to close them all out? They've already closed them down? So sometimes they just cap them and close them down and then sometimes they remove them altogether. Do you know which they're doing here?
They are.
And I appreciate your suggestion about the tree as a remediation tool as well. We had actually considered that really originally when this project first, when in January, the underground storage tanks came out and we were so proud of it really being disassembled as a gas station. And at one point we had said, well, we should plant an oak tree where the gas tanks were as a symbol of really our vision for the future of replacing oil with, with nature. So I was excited to hear a professional's thought on that tonight. Our understanding is that the monitoring wells are in place and we don't have an intention to remove those at this point.
That's good news from my perspective because even though the state and EPA often does this as well, signs off on cleanup when there's still residual contamination in the ground, especially with petroleum contamination, we definitely rely on Mother Nature to finish the job for us with natural attenuation of the contamination. But we often like to resample, you know, years down the road just to see whether Mother Nature is doing what we thought, you know, in terms of remediation. So in my mind, it's always good just to cap those wells, not remove them completely so that maybe 10 years down the road, you take some more samples and see whether if you planted a tree, it did the trick. There is some research out there about the types of trees. I've seen people use poplars because they tend to pull up the groundwater faster than other types of trees. The other thing I was going to mention to you is on the landscaping along Sir Francis Drake. You know, to have things that, that have leaves, like a hedge kind of or a bush, you know, will help to, you know, prevent sort of the road particulate, the car particulate from coming into, especially in my mind, the children's play area. You know, like any kind of planting will help reduce that, you know, sort of off-gassing from all the cars. And especially if you have something with branches that are, are lower, with leaves that are lower as opposed to like a tree with a trunk and then branches up higher, the lower down the branches are. So for like a hedge or bushes and things, those are really good to, you know, just act as a natural barrier to the street.
Perfect. We have the wall. I don't know if that's, if that's a.
Yeah, it looked like you were having some landscaping or like a planter along maybe the inside of that wall or something.
On the inside and the outside.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So just the more leafy, the better in my mind.
Cool. All right. Awesome. Thank you for that advice.
And I was going to ask you guys about the options that staff set out in the, in the report and what your thoughts were. I mean, I think I've heard from you a little bit, but maybe just specifically address each of the options that they, they laid out and what your reactions to those are. That would be helpful.
I, I think we, we had gone through them. Option, I'll just start with option two, which is probably the easiest to sort of say. From an operational and kind of a, when you walk into a restaurant, the last thing you want to see right in front of you is bathrooms. So while in a gas station, that makes sense and there was a maintenance area, we wanted to get those away from the, the places where people are going to be gathering and also back where we predominantly will have sinks and plumbing and can take care of a lot of the, the sort of more infrastructural aspects of that. And give that space back to the entry in terms of a community table, the ordering station and, and really the, the entry area. So option two was not to stay with what was in the, the previous plan. I, I think both of the other options is really compromising not only the kids' area space. I think we can, you know, taking two or three feet out of the outdoor seating is one thing, but moving things into that outdoor space enough that it, it eliminates that space or compromises it, I think was, was detrimental to, in our, in our mind. And, and we just, we also wanted to keep the parking lot as far east to allow that connection and allow, if you see in the plans, right outside the entry, we're calling it the bike plaza. And instead of a, a small space where people go right in front of the entry and then they have to go into the building, the idea is that there's a space where if it's busy and someone needs to wait or if someone's meeting someone, they can sit there and away from the parking lot, away from Broadway, away from Sir Francis Drake. So that was our idea on, on why those options weren't as desirable as what we ended up with.
Okay, thanks. And I guess I'll just reiterate what everybody else has said, which is, I really love this project. I really think it's fabulous. When I was in college in Boulder, there was a converted gas station/restaurant back in the early 80s. It was Dot's Diner. It was my favorite place to go eat and I've sort of been searching for their Huevo Francheros ever since. But I wanted to say, one of the things that I loved best about that gas station slash restaurant was that it kept some of the feel of being a gas station. Like you went in and you kind of knew you were sitting in the office of the gas station and it kind of evoked the gas station, but you're having the best meal of your life. So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in there as my experience. All right.
No, I would just, well, do we want to, I don't have a question for the applicant. Do the, do we want, do we need to bring it back to us so they can sit down or, I don't want to, if someone else has any other applicant questions, I have staff and a final comment.
I don't have an applicant question, but. But I, maybe I have a question for staff. That would be what it would be.
I'll come back.
There was the, there was the condition of one amplified keyboard and I was wondering why. I know that you're currently thinking of, the applicant is currently thinking of, of a particular kind of music that would involve non-amplified singers and, and one keyboard. But if you ever wanted to go with another kind of music such as a singer playing a guitar, that might, I'm wondering why we couldn't say one amplified instrument rather than one amplified keyboard, just to give additional flexibility.
You know, they, they could come back and revise that request. They, we asked them for more specifics about the live music that they wanted to have and they, rather than, you know, propose options, they said gospel with one amplified keyboard. So that came from them. They could, but they could think about it some more over the next month and propose a more definitive idea of what their live entertainment was going to be.
And you could broaden your approval.
I would suggest that to, to the applicant, to, to consider that. I mean, the issues are that the music can't be too loud and it can't be obnoxious just because there are neighbors around there. But otherwise, give yourself the flexibility that you can. That's, that's all my comments.
I, I just want to mention just some practical stuff here that if you, if you moved tables to the west a little bit, made them a little bit closer, you could probably, you know, fix the parking rather easily, I think. So that's just a, a comment.
So I was going to ask the staff, I was going to summarize some of the modifications that I've heard us make because it'd be nice to come back with those maybe in redline version on the resolution so that we can just go ahead and approve it. So I'm just going to read it to you. What I captured is some of the modifications that we made so we don't have to, so that we can come back next time. So we don't have to, so that we can come back next time with it all clarified. So I heard on whereas number two, business hours of operation, customer business hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then Monday through Friday.
And then weekends is six to 10.
Well, my question is if they have deliveries on the weekends, then it's always seven to 10. I mean, I heard to say it was seven to 10, Monday through Sunday, so that they could have... No.
They requested Monday through Friday, seven to 10, and Saturday and Sunday, six to 10.
Okay. So then that goes to number eight, which is the delivery discussion item. So if it's Monday through Friday, seven to 10, and Saturday, Sunday, six to 10, then item number eight would be only small delivery vehicles equal to or less than 24 feet in length will access the site between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, without any deliveries on Saturday and Sunday. If they're gonna be open at 6:00 a.m.
Well, okay.
No?
It's up to you what you want to do.
Well, I'm reading this to everyone, just...
So you just said...
Do you want to include the note?
Deliveries between 5:00 and 7:00 a.m., Monday through Friday?
Deliveries between 5:00 and 7:00, client hours seven to 10, Monday through Friday. And then if they want to be open at 6:00 a.m., Saturday and Sunday, I suppose they could have delivery between 5:00 and 6:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. So then on item number eight, which is all-around delivery, you would have delivery hours between six and seven... I'm sorry, five to six, Saturday and Sunday, and five to seven, Monday through Friday. Then in the second sentence, where you say the limited hours will enhance the function, you need to add the word "delivery." You don't mean the limited customer hours. You mean the limited delivery hours. So the limited delivery hours. And then just scratch the stuff in the parentheses at the end because I thought it was confusing if we're gonna clarify it upfront.
And no beepers on the truck?
Yes. And that's what I also said. So for vehicles equal to or less than 24 feet without air brakes or backup noise, if we're gonna have it that time. There's also nothing in the resolution about maximum occupancy at 96. It's in the discussion, but it's not in the resolution. So we probably ought to have that some. I think that goes in the resolution. Sorry for being detailed, but this will help us next time.
And you meant seating, not occupancy?
Sure, seating, yes. Seating for 96. Somewhere in the resolution, I don't know if it's another item, but somewhere in the resolution saying that the seating is for 96. And then the other issue that we talked about was on item number seven. Not in the whereas', but if you keep going to... The second group of whereas', where you scratch out the notwithstanding section, blah, blah, blah. And then on number 19, to say one amplified instrument instead of keyboard. That's where that would be. So if you, it would be great to have those come back just to reflect this conversation. I think it'd be helpful for us. I think it'd be very helpful for the applicant, for the applicant to know a reflection of what our conversation was. So there's no switching it around later on after we had this conversation. Then I had an idea that I wanted to share. Two ideas that I wanted to share in terms of seating and parking for employees that I had while I was sitting up here. One is the benches that are in Gestalt House, those long kind of communal tables seem to be really popular and people really enjoy that. So one idea would be to take, I like that you have picnic benches, but what if they were just long communal family-style benches? Maybe that would help squeeze some more space in. You don't have to respond to that right now. It's just an idea. I'm not gonna say it's a condition. It's just an idea. But they seem to be really popular. I think it'd be really fun to have outside seating with long kind of communal tables. So just an idea. The other idea was tearing off of the idea of like toolshare co-ops and kind of sharing economy things. If you guys, for your employees, might be able to do a donate-your-driveway-during-the-day campaign with community members around here. And maybe you could get people who go away and work during the day to donate their driveway to your employees, who could park in it like this is, they donate a driveway, right? So it's a sharing economy and we share our vacant spaces. So that was an idea for your employees. And then you could have a little sticker in your window that says, "I donated my driveway to the station," right?
You don't want that because the car in the driveway makes it look like there's somebody there.
Security too. Excellent idea. So maybe that'll help your employees. And then you'll attract awesome employees too.
One last thing. I know you probably don't have your 10 employees, but if you could do some kind of local hire effort, that'd be awesome. Not a requirement.
Okay, well...
The, I guess I would just... Oh, yeah, okay.
Just really quickly, point of clarification. We're six to seven employees now with the smaller space, so that's...
Okay, thank you.
So with regard to what Commissioner Hamilton was saying with the hours, I'm wondering whether we could, whether we really need to specify anything further than that the delivery hours begin at 5:00, no earlier, and no beepers, no air brakes, and the deliveries happen when the place is closed. And let the boundary between when the deliveries end and when the place opens be a flexibility that they can work out. I don't see any reason why we need to pin that down. Yeah, just...
You worked that language out.
Right. And another thing is, I think you're going to need to do a little bit of a feasibility study about this 24-foot truck and no beepers. I mean, in my mind, I think trucks can't have no backup beepers. I'm not sure if they can turn them off. So we need to, I'm not a vehicle code expert. So you guys need to do a study on that and come back to us also on that point. It's tentatively a condition, but we need to hear from you too. At this point, I think I would like to close the public portion and put this to a motion. I'm suggesting of a continuance of one month to get these engineering and technical points worked out, which I have no doubt we will do, and to call for a motion therefore.
Okay. I move that we continue this discussion until next month. And with the, as we've elaborated, I won't go through it all again, but that we're looking for some specific issues on a few of these questions that have come up. But primarily, the biggest one is the parking lot being safe to get in and out of without having to back out onto Sir Francis Drake, even if a car pulls into the parking area while it's full.
And second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. As I've said, there's a 10-day appeal period. Oh, no, it's continued. Sorry, there is a continuation. So we'll see you next month, July 16th, and hopefully everything will work out. The next thing on our agenda is the election of a tree committee alternate. So how should we proceed on that? Do we have... Not yet.
What date does the tree committee meet?
They meet the fourth Monday of each month. And Laura has indicated she will continue as the main member. This is just an alternate, so when she can't make it, it's someone to fill in for her.
Not me, thank you. I've got the open space meeting the next day. It's a little much for my week.
The person that staffs the tree committee has asked me to apply pressure to you guys because they've lost some members and they really had a hard time getting a quorum. And so trees have been continued and people are getting angry because they can't get a decision.
Well, other than the larch and redwoods, I'm not very good at identifying or figuring out trees.
Yeah, you don't have to be because what Susan does is she tries to explain to them that if they're taking out a redwood or any kind of a heritage tree, their best, the best idea is to have an arborist report. And so usually they show up with that if it's a redwood or an oak. If they don't show up with one, then, and you don't feel comfortable, you can continue it and you can direct the town tree person, Ray Moritz, to go look at the tree. We recently had an arborist report that the tree committee didn't feel comfortable with, and so they hired Ray to critique it. So you don't, you're never really totally responsible for the removal of the tree. I mean, you make a decision, but you can ask for expert, you know.
And I also don't have time, though. It's just that way. So anyone else?
Some committees have actually hired, elected two alternates. I meant elected. You know, they've appointed two alternates. So I don't know if that helps at all, if there's two of you willing to kind of take it on.
Who else is on committees, other committees already? Now I'm looking at you three.
Well, it looks like we have to strong-arm somebody, but I certainly can't do it. My time is way used up.
In the interim, is there any way, somebody on the tree, is there any way of creating an emergency step-in if Laura can't do it and they're gonna have to cancel quorum or something like that?
Do we know if there are particular tree committee meetings that Laura is unavailable for?
No, because she's got some health issues in her family and, you know, things going on. So I don't think she really knows.
Well, I happen to know tonight Laura is at a graduation. It's not an ongoing thing.
Fourth Monday.
Fourth Tuesday, Monday is the tree committee.
Okay, well...
The only thing I could recommend would be to ask the... Well, ask the town attorney for a solution.
Town attorney to see if there's the ability of having like an emergency, you know, email that goes out to us to, if they're gonna have to cancel it, to say, hey, is anybody happen to be available next Monday for a one-shot step-in? And we could rotate that way. And if that's possible...
That's a very good idea.
Then, you know, somebody who is here.
What time are the meetings?
Yeah, I like that too.
They're at 7:00 p.m.
And how long do they usually go?
Boy, I don't know the answer to that.
One of the concerns is they involve more than just going to the meeting.
You have to look at the tree.
The ordinance doesn't actually say that there has to be an alternate. That's just what we've done because it seemed, we seem to be plagued, our tree committee. We often have a trouble getting a quorum, so... Fourth Monday. Each month.
We'll say we're, no one's available to do it, and we'll ask the town attorney what the options are.
Yeah, I guess that's the way to go here. And I think, though, that Shelley's idea of kind of circulating an email from the committee to us would be a good idea. Then we can maybe cover it.
The emergency email, like we're gonna have, what you're gonna ask the attorney about. Are you clear on what that is?
I know I'm gonna ask the attorney what the solution is because none of you are really available full-time. To ask them if they can just, if they can jump around with whoever's available and not have a sense.
Yes. That was the idea.
I thought you meant you wanted me to send the email that I sent to the attorney.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so with that, we'll put the question to the town attorney. We now have approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. And those who are in attendance at the particular minutes, any comments? Should we take them both at once, or what would you like to do?
I think there's just one.
One set of minutes, okay.
11th and, I thought there were two.
Yeah, you have two sets. May 11th, which was a special meeting, right?
Oh, yeah. We do have two. Okay.
And then May 21st.
They're stapled together. So it's 8A and 8B on the agenda item numbers.
On the May 11th minutes, my name is down twice. I was only there once.
That's how much loved you are. So that, any other corrections? On May 11th? May 21st minutes, any comments or corrections? I noticed they say Shelley Hamilton, vice chair, arrived at 7:10.
If you guys could go through yours, I'm just going back through mine for a second, if you don't mind. Okay, I have a correction. Joanne on page... Six at the bottom. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking about May 21st. The very last paragraph on page six. The last sentence of that paragraph, "He discussed the additions that have been made by previous tenants behind the building at 31 Bellinas and an informal residence addition erected by the owner, redact at and put in there 'on the lot behind 29 Bellinas that fronts Mono Lane.'" Next page, top paragraph. Are you with me? I'm sorry. Sorry. So you got the one on six, okay? It's, right now it's reading that the live work is on 29. That's not true. Erected, erected, the addition was on the lot behind 29 Bellinas. Okay. And then... On the next page, page seven. All right, do you have page seven? I can give you my notes if you want, but I'd read them in the record. Okay. Top page seven. Mr. Moore explained that the applicant is proposing to bifurcate the... Please add after the front portion of the building on 31 Bellinas into two commercial spaces, add after spaces, "fronting Bellinas Road." And ensure it is brought into compliance, and I'm reading now what is there. So it would read, "two commercial spaces fronting Bellinas Road." And then back on the text, "and ensure it is brought into compliance of the code." He also discussed proposed new commercial tenant space and the common area with a stairway leading to office space and a new ADA compliant restroom. Redact the period after restrooms and please add "in the mid portion of 31 Bellinas Road." Next paragraph. Mr. Moore discussed additional tenant space at the back of the lot on 31 Bellinas, which he said is bifurcated by a hallway. And instead of "with a live-work space," leading, redact "with a" and add "leading to the live-work space fronting Mono Lane." That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I have, and I think I'm right, I have one correction to page two. Okay, I have, and I think I'm right, I have one correction to page two of, um, May 21st, and that is, I rec, Mr. Green recused himself because he lives, I think it's 300 feet of the 24 Iron Springs Road, instead of 500 feet.
Actually, it's 500. The law changed, it used to be 300, but it's, it's been increased to 500.
Okay, when, when did that change occur?
I don't remember, it's been, it's been a few years now that it's 500.
All right, I stand corrected.
We're still on minutes?
Yes.
We're still on minutes?
Okay.
Unless we have a, a motion to approve the minutes as edited?
I motion to approve the minutes as edited.
Second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I approved the 21st, but I was not present at the 11th, so I approve that.
Okay.
And I'm not approving minutes either.
Well, you have to, you weren't here, yes, okay.
So, Mr., I'm sorry.
So, um, okay, now we can move on to the discussion items, and we have zoning ordinance issues, list prioritization. Yes?
Can I first apologize? I was going to bring you the shortlist that I gave to the council at the budget workshop, and I failed to do that tonight. So, given the hour, and I, I will bring it next time, and then we can sort of review what went to them, and I'll fill you in on sort of the marching orders to date, if that's okay, and then we can also chew on this some more, if you like, if that's okay.
Excellent suggestion. Actually, I expected to see a list of five, so, yes, let's, let's put that off for, for...
We should, we should ask for public comment, since this is on the item, and I think we have someone from the...
Okay, all right, is, is there any public comment on the sections of the zoning ordinance that we were looking at for possible revision?
I don't know if it totally applies, but I'll just put it out there for you guys.
Who are you?
We know, but... I'm Cassidy DeBaker, 145 Lansdale.
Actually, it's not legally required to give your name, and I've seen some authorities saying it's better not to ask.
Well, we, we actually say if you feel comfortable, you know, you give your name and your address, but if you don't, you don't have to. Yeah, and also, the record, Cassidy, is also on the general planning foundation committee.
Yes. So, one thing that I wanted to say was, in regards to the historic character of the downtown, and one of the things I would just request that the planning commission consider is to describe collectively what one means when they say "the historic character of the downtown." I don't mean designating a historic downtown, I don't mean to open up that can of worms, but I do think, for the purpose of moving forward, I think it's important to describe what we mean by the historic character of the downtown, for example, considering the exterior appearance of the buildings that we have in our downtown area, and just asking the planning commission to consider that, like you would consider plantings or nearby buildings, so, I think it would be a good thing to think about.
Excellent suggestion.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may offer up, if we ever get to the town center plan development exercise, we have as a piece of that developing, um, development standards and design guidelines for the town center area. So, that would be a perfect place, and even before that, we could start to, if we had the bandwidth and time and wherewithal, which I love to, start to zero in on what are the key elements in the central commercial historic part of town. But to codify that with the whole package of the town center plan would be wonderful. With design guidelines, development standards and design guidelines, we have in the general plan license to develop those during that process.
Great, thank you.
Just to say, uh, just a comment, because I, I mentioned this a few times, when I sit in Sorella Restaurant and I look down towards the, towards, down the road, I, you squint a little, you take off your glasses so you can't see real well, and you imagine horses and horse-drawn carriages and dirt road and a, you know, wood sidewalk. All you need to do is add those things, and you've got a historic downtown. I agree with you fully, thank you.
I, I definitely agree, having been through several of those processes that were initiated, I think even before you were here, where we were talking about development standards and design guidelines, I think we even have a first pass, I'll have to go see if I can find them, I don't know if you've seen them.
I have.
Okay. My only other comment in terms of prioritizing something like that might have to do with, you know, when, in the general plan, when we talked about the CH to CC, to integrate the, integrate that into the entire downtown, that was to create kind of a cohesive, integrated downtown area, and, and I don't know if it would help that concept to really have a more clear articulation of what does that mean to be part of the downtown area, and it seems like those conversations around development standards and design guidelines might aid in that conversation.
And thank you so much for saying it, because, um, I'll jump ahead to my report a little bit, um, we're targeting now August for the CH to CC discussion, and I could, in my presentation, weave in exactly sort of what the big concept was of sort of going back to the future with getting away from auto-centric bookends of town towards the historic character of the center, and I will.
Time frame in August for that?
I don't have a target date yet.
Okay, well, let's move on to the planning director's report.
Okay, and it'd probably be the latter part, because I'm taking the last two weeks of July off. And then, we're targeting the parking forum to September, these things just have a way of sliding along, and one of the reasons that we got waylaid a little bit on those two exercises is that before you next month, and you'll be happy to hear this, Bruce, we're mandated by the state to come up with a streamlined rooftop solar permitting by September. So, we have on our desk right now a draft ordinance for just that, and it'll be before you in July, and we're on a tight timeline, because you need to see it in July, and then the first reading in August, and then the second reading in September, so we're in compliance with the state.
You might want to try to get that ready in time for the climate action committee to agendize, taking a look at and commenting on it.
It would be really helpful, given the tight timeline we're on, if they could come to their planning commission meeting. I don't think it's going to be possible to, um, we, we can talk offline, see if there's any way, any way.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking in particular of one member of the climate action committee, who probably could make some useful comments, maybe just meeting with him during the course of...
We have, we just got it last week, and, and the building officials going through it, sort of the checklist that the state gives you, um, I'm going to get into it next week, and then we, um, we'll massage the admin draft, and then it will start being ready for public review, but I, I'll, I'll be glad to discuss with you, it's a good idea, thank you. It's just a really tight timeline, just came out of nowhere two weeks ago. Our lawyers, our very able town attorneys reminded us that we have this mandate, so all of a sudden, we whipped into action. We have several things that are now before us as mandates, so... And so, with that, I, I can't think, oh, I would ask Commissioner Hamilton to fill in the blanks on her conversation with the public works director and his assistant, Sean Caudry, because, remember, you asked for clarification on the signaling in the east side of town, and we got into a collective email trail, and then you guys stopped CCing me, so I don't know where, what happened. You articulated the finer points. The, the report, the report was actually done...
Are you saying I was detail-oriented?
The, the report was done last summer, we found out, which was a big aha.
Um, I, I did have a few back and forths with the San Anselmo Public Works Director on, it was one of our items from the last, about the Pistori, that, the signals right at the edge of town. I need to get back in touch with them, there were some details, I saw a summary document, and it, it didn't quite track, and so, what I asked him to do was to disaggregate the data, so the data that they had was all the way down the entire, um, valley, and I asked, "Could he disaggregate the traffic data for just the two stoplights adjacent to Fairfax?" And so, he was still going to go and do that, and they did do some traffic studies to find out the timing, because there were some changes that were made, both for pedestrian and bike across Sir Francis Drake, but then there was also some timing changes. So, I don't have the rest of the details on just those two lights, but I'll bring them in for next time, or, I don't think you missed out on, on any emails, so...
And it's just so much fun to turn things around and ask you to bring back some more information.
Okay, Jim, if your, if your report is concluded, then we have a session for Commissioner comments and requests prior to adjournment, if there are any.
I was wondering where the storage facility was for the packets when we're done with them? Can I just put it in there?
And everything to pass out to the council, so we actually do collect everything up.
Oh, I was being facetious.
Too much paper, yeah. Oh, no, I collect them all.
So, I would give all of my notes to you?
No, I mean, if there's a staff report that you've written on that you want to keep, you can take those out, but all the plans and all the, and all the samples I take away.
Oh, thank God, I was wondering what, I was going to have to get a permit to build a storage unit to keep them in.
Just leave them right in front of you, and I lock them up, and then the street department brings them to me, and I store them at town hall and save them and cherish them until the next meeting.
And, and that's a big deal, because the applicants have to provide us with 14 sets.
I put a note on the items that I took with me, so you can see.
Okay, great.
It's an expensive exercise for the applicant.
Yeah, and then we keep them for the full appeal period, because if someone appeals it, we need to have them to pass on to the council, so, yeah.
So, okay, give me a little bit more guidance here, do I have to pull out everything that I wrote notes on, or just if I want it for my own personal reference?
Only if you want it, because I take it all back, and what, I'll be totally honest, I pull all your notes out till I get my letters of action done, and I read everyone's notes to make sure I haven't missed anything in my notes, right? And then I recycle the staff reports, right, unless I'm going to pass them out, unless there's something I need to save to pass out at the next meeting.
And we have no admin.
And we have no admin.
Okay, so, for the, for the new commissioners, um, we only have another hour, so don't worry. No, can I, if, if we're, if we're ready, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight, we did a lot of work, thank you.